Ladies and gentlemen, we'll get started. Call to order the City Council Successory Agency to the real estate agency meeting of the City of San Carlos for October 14th, 2013. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the ordered agenda, City Manager or anybody on the desk? We will have item five B will sort of come when Senator Hill comes. So, we are estimating around eight o'clock for that. So, we're not sure. So, if you'd like to go out and get coffee and come back. No changes, moving on. Report from closed session, Mr. Rubens?
There's no report from closed session.
Thank you. Council Communications and Announcements, Ms. Clapper?
I attended the board meeting for the Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance, otherwise known as Commute.org. Their shuttle ridership is up 19 percent. And they now, when you do a search for how to get from one place to another, they will include their shuttle vans. So, if you're taking Bart or Caltrain, and then there's a link to the employer's building that you're going to, it will actually show you what time the van will be leaving. So, they, which is great. Unfortunately, at this point in time, the Samtrans vans are not part of that system, but it's getting better and better for folks to work with. They also shared with us some more information about the Bay Area Bike Share Program, the Emergency Ride Home Program, and the Last Mile Connection Program. And I didn't know if other members of the council would be interested in having the alliance come in and give us a presentation about the different options that are available to employers to be able to participate in these different programs, something...
Sounds like a good idea. I know they do it to C- they've done it to C-CAG, but it'd be good to probably have it here. So, Mr. City Manager, you can work on that?
And the one last item tied to that meeting is that we did approve a 2.4 percent salary increase for the staff of the alliance organization for a one-year time period. And I wanted to let folks know on that October 26th, there will be a drug take-back program at the library parking lot from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's going to be, maybe they're coming now to take those drugs back.
Sounds like the worst.
Is that okay? And so, there's, it will be, San Carlos Green is hosting it. The Sheriff's Department will also be there so that all different types of drugs can be taken back, all in pill form. They've done this once before. In addition, now, at the Shoreway Environmental Center, will also take back drugs during their normal operating hours. And of course, we have here in the Sheriff's Office during operating hours, folks can drop that off. But October 26th is a great opportunity. Clear everything out, put it in a plastic bag, and come by and drop it off in front of the library.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Clapper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items. I attended the, one of our recent monthly meetings of the HART Board. HART is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, and I am proud to have succeeded Randy Royce, former member of the council and our representative to it. HART is trying to raise $200 million over the next 10 years to fund affordable housing in San Mateo County, and they've hired a consulting service to help us establish a campaign to raise the money. The second item is that the very next night I attended, I attended the CalMod meeting. It's called CalMod because it's Caltrain Modernization. It's all about electrification. That is moving along very swiftly. The construction has begun on laying all of the lines that have to be laid throughout the corridor. I also understand, by the way, that there's no real construction that needs to be done in San Carlos, because when they built the berm, the housing for the, all the electrical wiring is already in place. So, they won't be needing to dig up the ground for that. Anyway, and part of the, of the solution to all this electrification will be, or part of the process will be to have new trains. They will, there will be new, I forget what they call them, new rolling stock. That's what it is. And they are working on a thing called level boarding, which means that you walk off of the platform, right onto the train rather than having to step up. Seems like such an easy thing, but because with high-speed rail potentially coming through and freight and other, and Amtrak, turns out that lots of trains have different levels that, that people get on from the platform. So, that's a challenge, but it's coming along. And the third thing is, it's not really on anybody's agenda, but it's on my agenda. My daughter told me last week she's getting married.
Congratulations. Having a good thing?
We're happy.
Good. Well, unless you're happy, then, all right, man. Mr. Grocott?
Thank you. I have quite a few items, number of items here. The first one is, I do serve on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee with the, it's a subcommittee of C-CAG, which I believe, Bob, you're the Chair of C-CAG, is that right?
I was.
You were? Okay. And so, what BPAC does is, they look at bicycle pedestrian projects on an annual basis and award funding for, for projects that are applicants to that, to that money. And San Carlos, we were one of four cities to apply for a grant for planning, for just the planning process alone. And most of the projects are capital improvement. But we did set aside money as a BPAC specifically for planning projects this year, and San Carlos is one of four, so that puts us in a pretty good place probably to be awarded something. Our particular project is to create a pedestrian plan that will be coupled with the bicycle plan that we already have in place. And that meeting is going to take, our next meeting to look at those projects and award funding, I think, is October 25th or 26th. That's a Thursday. So, we have that coming up. The other items I wanted to make the council aware of or raise awareness on is, I was reading a article talking about CalPERS rates possibly going up with some of the different segments that they, that they provide retirement for, 27 percent. And as I read along in the article, there was a mention of a meeting that's coming up, and I don't know exactly where this meeting's taking place, but it said, it, I'll just read from the article here. CalPERS is holding a two-day asset liability management workshop next month. This was written in October, so I assume that is November. Open to the public and representatives from the 1,576 state and local government agencies in CalPERS are encouraged to attend. And I don't, I didn't know if we were aware of that as a council, if our staff's aware of that, might we have somebody go to that? But it's something I wanted to raise awareness.
Police staff will look into that and see if, if we need to be there.
We will do that.
Can you do that? Thank you. Then the, the next item I had was, I was taking a look at 1,001, it's called 1,001 Laurel Street to some people. Some people call it 1,001 El Camino, but it's the, where Salvatoris used to be, and now we have the mixed-use development. And when I was taking a look at it, I noticed that it doesn't have any trees whatsoever along the El Camino. And yet, I asked Mr. Savay to get out the documents and the drawings that were submitted when it went through its process of being approved, and it very clearly shows eight trees along the El Camino. I was talking to Al about that. He said it's because utilities were discovered, but I wanted to find out from the council if there's any interest in having that looked at again. I don't know if it would need to come through us or the Planning Commission or just go through staff, but to look at some way to get some foliage, as was shown in those documents, put in place to soften the starkness of that building.
I agree with you. And I think, I asked, I possibly balked, I mean, again, here's a great idea, but tree in a box, as they say, but that's above the ground. You don't have to dig for it, except somebody has to make, somebody has to be responsible for taking care of it. I don't know what the Planning Commission approval was for that.
Yeah, I don't either, and that's why I'd like to see if, if it could be revisited.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be something that, that staff would be able to pursue under the additional, I mean, not the additional, the existing approvals?
I would think so.
I mean, I don't object to having it come back to the council, but I'm not sure.
I don't think it needs to come back to us.
We'll, we'll explore all the options available to us, and if, if those options require us to come back to council, that's what we'll do.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
And then the last item I have is, has to do with, we sent out a newsletter, we do the, the city manager does a newsletter, and I don't know how this came about, but I highlighted this, so people can see it. It has this picture on here of Building Two on, from the El Camino, it says, and you'll notice what I clouded there, there's two things missing in those gaps, and that's the rest of the building. I don't know how this happened, but I sure would like to know how it happened and how it ended up in our city manager's newsletter. I'm not, you know, at all pointing fingers at our city manager, because I know he's, he's busy and he does a lot of things, and this was probably provided to him somehow. But I do think it needs to be looked into, how this ended up in here, where the graphic came from. It shows also stairs going up to the train, as though there's a platform there, which there most definitely is not. But it's really unfortunate this, this information went out to the community and gives the impression that there's all these gaps and open error in between these buildings, or the parts of this building, Building Two, when there most certainly is not. And I think we might want to look into sending something out again and straightening out this information to the community.
Mr. City Manager, could you link that for us?
Absolutely. Be happy to follow up on that.
Thank you very much.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Strohberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One is, since our last meeting, I was involved with sitting in, representing us at the SBWMA Oversight Board Meeting. That's the South Bay Waste Management Association. It's the consortium of public agencies that collect trash and recycling. We'll obviously be talking about that in greater depth later tonight with the agenda item. The one thing I did want to point out is, I think staff needs to look at and council needs to consider adjusting the calendar on which we discuss our, setting our trash rates, because effectively, an awful lot of the trash rate gets defined in September. And of course, we are actually, in terms of cost, we are actually going to be talking later tonight about setting the rate for recovering revenue, but it'd be nice to link those two things, and I think we ought to move up on our calendar when we are discussing trash rates. The second thing, I just want to pass along, I believe we're going to be getting a letter to this effect from the school board president, Adam Rack, but he let me know that he was going to try and show up here tonight, but unfortunately, there was a conflict with scheduling. And that's just that the district wanted to thank us very much and thank staff in particular for all the work that was done regarding the issues with Line 147. This is a particular concern, the safety of that line is a particular concern to the school district, because in addition, having many parents, of course, that live near there, they have a number of schools that are relatively close to Line 147. So, I wanted to, on behalf of Adam, sort of extend the thanks particularly to staff.
Okay. Couple things, attended the SBSA, which is the South Bay Side, South Bay Side System Authority, which is our wastewater treatment joint powers agreement with ourselves, Belmont, Redwood City, and West Bay, which considers, is part of Menlo Park and Atherton. And we're in the midst of a $400 million new plant. The main item that we're working on right now is a 48-inch main that's going from Redwood City all the way through San Carlos and goes near Bear Island. So, it's a huge project. I think it's 40 to 50 million dollars alone. Mr. Walter, I can't remember if that's the right number. I don't see him. Where Jay is? Well, he's not here. So, that's okay. Thought he was going to be here.
Vacation?
Yeah, he went on vacation.
Seriously, he's getting ready to go.
I know he is, but he said he was going to be at the meeting, so I guess he's standing outside. That's fine. No problem.
There he is. Here he is.
Is the, is the 48-inch main? And he appears, just like that. Is the 48-inch main about 40 to 50 million dollars, I think? It's approximately that the cost?
It was, it's more than that. Probably eighty-one.
Okay, eighty-one. Thank you for correcting me. Thank you. That's, you can go down. Oh, God. Oh, man. This is going to be a long night. The other thing is that, anyway, that's the main item that we have on that. And I also attended a City and County Association of Government Meeting, C-CAG Meeting, which was alluded to earlier with Mr. Grocott, where again, we discussed transportation dollars, and there's additional money for, there's millions and millions of dollars every year that come from the state and from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission from all over the place, that San Mateo County gets a good share of, and because of the good staff of C-CAG. And then it filters down so that all the cities get opportunities to get part of those funds. So, things that we do. The other thing is, I can't remember if I did this last time. I apologize. The last week has been a bit of a blur. Did I talk about asking staff to look into having the Transportation and Circulation Commission look at the relocation of the shuttles?
No.
Okay. If I didn't do that, I apologize. I talked to staff about it, but I wanted to, in public, to ask if they could look at that, the shuttles and also the taxis. It's always been connected to the, to the Transit Village Project, and I think it can be decoupled, and we could get started on it a little bit early and maybe even have a solution for it, to move it over to the other side, and then have a little bit of a benefit to the, to the East Side folks, whether or not the Transit Village ever comes about. So, if we could look at that and have staff take a look at that for the TNC meeting, for the next meeting, that'd be great. And the other thing that I was looking at was, we have disabled parking in downtown, and I think there's one disabled, the ordinance says there's one disabled parking spot for each X spots. And I was approached by some folks asking that we look at that, again, with the Transportation and Circulation Commission, to see if perhaps we might want to add, I think there's one on each side, let's say for the 600, the 700, 800 block, we might add one more. That'd only be six slots that would be given up, but there is a bunch of folks, I think, that could utilize that and still be able to get around a little easier if we had a few more of those. I know there's some in Wheeler Plaza, and there's some all over the place. There has to be, but I think just looking at that would be, would be helpful, if we could just see if we can add a couple more on, especially on Laurel Street. Okay. Yes?
There's actually one other thing which none of us mentioned, which Mr. Grocott and I were both thinking we ought to mention, which, if you'd like to...
Sure. I think most of us were down on Laurel Street and San Carlos Avenue this weekend at the Art and Wine.
Some of us seem working booths.
I know it. I, I had a great time working at Domenico's, and, and I forget the other winery I worked at on Sunday, but it was hopping, and it was...
Domenetti.
Yeah, that's right. You're exactly right. So, it looked to me like we had a very successful art and wine festival, and much thanks to, I know it takes a huge effort from our community volunteer-wise to get out there at, I don't know, 6:30, 7:00 in the morning to start setting up on Saturday morning. And the other thing is, we always thank God for giving us good weather on art and wine weekend. So, there we go.
And actually, I just want to, just want to say that unlike the rest of you, I, I was just doing some of the heavy lifting by buying as many things as I could. Although, Mr. Mayor, I, I still think you picked a warm soda for me when I was buying that soda for me.
I'll give you your money back.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on, presentations. We have a couple of presentations, but the first one is to present proclamation to police personnel for the pursuit and apprehension of a felony fugitive. Chief, do you want to introduce this, please, for us?
I would. Thank you, Mayor Grisilli. Members of the City Council. Steve, can I get you to just kind of walk up here, and we'll have a file like this way so everybody can see you? I'll go ahead and set the stage. First of all, I want to thank the council for recognizing the police officers and deputies here tonight, and I want to set the stage for the public on, on this, and then before the mayor can give the official proclamation. This event occurred on August 16th, but it was actually predated by a couple of events. On August 16th is the night we're talking about, the day in question, our deputies made an arrest of a dangerous felony fugitive. But this is a person who we had chased and been in high-speed pursuits of a couple times prior, and we were looking for him. This is a particularly dangerous situation and very difficult decision-making for the officers, because there is a trade-off. High-speed pursuits are inherently dangerous. Armed felony fugitives are inherently dangerous, and, and there's these trade-off decisions that have to be made. On August 16th, the group of officers and deputies located this particular felony fugitive in Redwood City. When they first initially tried to apprehend him, he almost ran over one of the officers. They ended up pursuing this particular person into, into San Carlos city limits, where he collided with patrol vehicles, and he was taken into custody. This particular person has quite a track record, a criminal track record. He was known by police to carry weapons, and he was also known to really have no regard whatsoever for the public and for public safety. I think this particular arrest, again, points out the inherent dangers and difficult decisions that police officers have to make all the time. And also, if you notice here, there's, there's a few uniforms up here. We have the Redwood City Police Department, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, and the San Mateo County Probation Office here, all working together. Us working together in this county to apprehend people, to draw boundaries and work together is nothing un, unnew, nothing new at all. We do that all the time. And so, I just want to, again, thank, thank the council. I can tell you that this community is an interesting and great community police. They have a very low tolerance for crime. They have high expectations of their police department, and they are also extremely appreciative of good police work. And the deputies know that from working here. I know that from working here, and the recognition tonight by the council is also an indicator of that. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Mayor, and thank you again.
We have some items over here. You gentlemen can just stay right there. Gentlemen and ladies, excuse me. Folks, just stay there, and I'll read it from here. There's, I guess there's no, is there a list of all the names in one place?
It's on the top.
It's on the top? Okay, fine. Ask and you shall receive. Put it on these, so I can actually read it. I want to make sure I read this into the record, proclamation. Commanding in all these, all these folks. Detective Sergeant Al Elze, is that correct, or Elze? Okay. Detective Mark Myers. Detective David Padilla. Sergeant Steve Pettit. Deputy Torsten Sommer. Detective Ryan Adler. Officer Carmine Galoda. Officer Omar Castillo. And Officer Kay Cho for their selfless and heroic action in the pursuit and apprehension of a felony fugitive, whereas sometimes necessary for law enforcement officials to put themselves in danger in an effort to bring to justice those who put innocent people at risk. And whereas on August 16th, 2013, one such situation called upon members of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, the Redwood City Police Department, and the San Mateo County Probation Department to pull together resources in attempting to apprehend a felony fugitive. And whereas upon contacting the fugitive in Redwood City, the fugitive attempted to run over a sheriff's detective with his vehicle in attempt to evade capture. Fugitive then fled the area in his vehicle at a high rate of speed, maneuvering with blatant disregard for public safety. Once the pursuit entered San Carlos, the Sheriff's Office, San Carlos Patrol Bureau engaged and participated in the pursuit. And whereas the pursuit ended when the fugitive collided with sheriff's vehicles at the corner of Orange Avenue and Royal Avenue in San Carlos, law enforcement personnel were then able to take him into custody. And whereas this is just one of the many examples of how San Mateo County law enforcement agencies cooperate, come together, and work as one team whenever the need arises in any of our communities. And whereas this courageous action in averting danger to the community was an act of heroism, which deserves special recognition by the City Council of the City of San Carlos, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Bob Grisilli, Mayor, and the City Council of San Carlos do hereby tender this proclamation with the deepest gratitude and sincere appreciation to the City of San Carlos and all the citizenry to Detective Al Elze, Detective Mark Myers, Detective David Padilla, Sergeant Steve Pettit, Deputy Torsten Sommer, Detective Ryan Adler, Officer Carmine Galoda, and Officer Omar Castillo, and Officer Kay Cho for their selfless and heroic action in the pursuit and apprehension of a felony fugitive dated this 14th day of October, 2013. Thank you very much. So, why don't I have you, why don't I have you, why don't I have you? Is it on? Why don't I have you guys come over, then I'll be able to hand you, we have a, if I can open it.
A coin?
A city coin for each of you, and also the proclamation.
I think we need one more applause.
There are certain things that the mayor gets to do that he or she takes great pride in, and for me, that, that presentation was one of those. As, as Chief mentioned, our public safety folks, police, as well as the fire people, there's some folks in the fire department here tonight, too, every day put their lives on the line, and they, they, they don't get a lot of recognition unless something happens. And this time, it was a good thing it happened, and I'm happy that we were able to recognize him, so, thank you. As I mentioned before, the next item on our agenda is 5B, which is a presentation of a memorial, presentation to Yvette Royce in honor of the late former Mayor Randy Royce by Senator Jerry Hill. Senator Hill should be here, hopefully within the next 20 minutes or so, so we'll postpone that until he comes. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Persons wishing to adjust to city. On matters not on the post of the agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than, more than five individuals wishing to speak, the mayor can draw five speaker cards. We won't be doing that. There's only three apparently so far, so we'll start with that. The first name I have is Dimitri Vadelis.
Good evening, council members. I've got a very quick presentation. I would really appreciate it, and this is the second time. The first time I sort of let it slide, but if you have a presentation, I'd really appreciate knowing ahead of time. So, no problem. I'll let you go again, but if you have any more during public comment, I really appreciate knowing about it. Because technically, we're limited to two minutes. I don't want to cut you off. I think it would actually be in two minutes, and I have another speaker who's seated their time. Okay, that's fine. I'm just asking if it, it goes over, okay? Thank you. Sure. In the future, how would I, how would I go about? You can just tell me before the meeting starts. Well, I, I did inform. You could tell me before the meeting starts. Okay, sure. Thank you. Go ahead. All right. I just want to do the slideshow thing. If someone can help me with this old version. Well, we'll just do it this way. So, I received in the mail on Friday what I'm citing as a misinformation flyer, and thank you to Councilmember Grocott for bringing this up earlier. What I saw was a depiction of three separate buildings with courtyards and sky behind them, and that was quite, I was, I was stumped for a minute, because I couldn't figure out where in the plans we had that much open space between the buildings. And it turns out that it's, this is actually Building Two, supposedly is viewed from El Camino. But if it's one building, how can there be clouds and sky behind the courtyards? It turns out, this is actually Building Two. This is the depiction of Building Two, and you can see that it's a solid, solid building. So, unless there's some new advanced technological advances in building materials, I think that the picture isn't, is, is very false and misleading to the public. And you can see that this, this building is just a solid wall that's facing the East Side. I was also concerned reading about good notes, that within there, it implied that all issues were resolved, but there are open questions about affordable housing. In fact, the applicant has, had tried to get out of that. Noise, shadows, heightened open space were still significant concerns. And this is, is a representation of all of the buildings, and you can see that lot coverage is, is significant, extensive. The buildings, two of the buildings are over one and a half blocks of residential area in length with no, with no breaks, and every other building is... in length with no breaks, and every other building is a good city block length. And that's it. So I'm questioning about ownership and responsibility for this. Why were critical issues under serious contention being portrayed as solved? And who approved the flyer? Who will take ownership of this false and misleading advertisement, or flyer? I mean, it feels like an advertisement for the trans-village. Why did San Carlos taxpayer dollars get spent on this misinformation? I personally feel that this flyer needs to be redone and resent to all San Carlos residents with a retraction. And that's it.
That's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next speaker card I have is Gina Van Dels. Gina Van Dels? Going once? Okay. Next speaker card I have is Carl Drezer, or Dresden, I'm not, sorry. Apologize if I butchered the last name. I don't know.
I was going to give it to you. Carl Dresden has resided 564 Vista since 1985. I have a concern that there's a building project going on next to us by out-of-town builders, developers. And they've departed from the RDRC and Planning Commission approvals, and in that they moved the property lines, all four property lines, and the location of the house structure. And now it's five feet closer to our home. And this was without following the process of a new hearing or informing the property owners. And so we request that the City Council would hear the matter or have the matter reheard by the Planning Commission or the RDRC Committee or whoever the City Council deems appropriate. And that's my request.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, could you please notify the appropriate building department or whatever, whomever to look into that and find out what, how in the bloody blazes they could, if they did move four areas? That sounds like a huge amount of thing or time.
We've been communicating with Mr. Dresden on this issue. We've had building inspectors out to the site. We do not confirm property lines in the city. That's not our legal role or responsibility and have a way to do that. As far as we can tell, in terms of what was approved, it's proceeding according to the approved plans. However, there certainly is a potential issue on this property line dispute between neighbors, essentially, which would be a civil matter.
Okay.
But we will continue to cooperate and work with. We've had meetings with the home builder as well as the neighbor.
Could you give us, could you just send back a, some sort of a summary for the next meeting, or in our packet, or in the next week or so, of what, both sides maybe, so we understand the whole issue?
Sounds good. We'll get you as much information as we have.
If it can be determined that these drawings were changed between the time, I met with the speaker here at his site and looked over some of these drawings, and as you characterized, I was really surprised that lines could change around that much. A, without any indication on plans from one set, one submittal process to the other. So what I'm wondering is if there's a way that we could, you know, we can do what you're asking, certainly, but at some point, might we be able to pull this either back to the Planning Commission or back up to us?
Well, depending.
To take a, to take a look at it? Because it was approved under one pretense, and as I understand it, the property owner's not contesting, you know, where the property lines land. I think he may or may not be okay with that. But as it impacts the design of the project, the layout of the project, where he expected things to be, there is an issue there, and he may be due some kind of recourse, not necessarily in, again, not in saying, "Well, the property line has to be here or there," but just, the building's been put in place based on an assumption of where some property lines are, which I think his contestant here, what he's contesting is that the building, as built, because the property lines were shown in one place at one point in the process and in another place in the process later, the structure's ending up closer to his house than he expected.
Oh, I get it.
And so, that to me seems to be the issue, and we ought to be able to call that up to the dais or put it to the Planning Commission to have some resolution made.
I don't have, you know, you and I have been, were in the same, or you are in the business, I used to be in the business. And it's very important to me, when we were doing, you had to have the right plans, and if they've changed, that's, I can't understand how they could have.
Right.
They went, they were approved at X now, but Mr. Malpe did say that we're not in the property line business. So, you know, I mean, it's.
And again, I'm not saying we are in the property line business, but what we are in the business of is approving plans and drawings per the information that's given us. And as it appears, the structure that's being built, that's under construction, is closer than what the property owner, the neighbor, understood to be the case because of the graphic changes on these drawings.
Yeah, all I was going to say is, ultimately, maybe this comes back to the Planning Commission, maybe this comes back to the dais. But it seems to me that if there's a set of approved plans and there's a variance to the plans, that again falls under the heading of enforcement.
Right.
I would look to staff first. My question to staff would be, what's actually happened? And if something has happened, how do, number one, how do we fix it? And number two, how do we make sure that, are there things that we could do differently that would prevent these kinds of problems from happening in the future? But to me, talking about pulling it up to the dais or sending it back to the Planning Commission is premature. That may be where it goes, but.
Well, I agree with, the staff should, the staff should tell me, or tell us, if the picture is this, then how did it become that? So, anyway, you think you know where we're going here.
And I understand where you're coming from. And just so we're clear here, and I'd like the city attorney to weigh in here in just a second, because this is a very significant issue for the city, because it relates to the property lines. When the city reviews and approves a project, and the way that our code is written, as those of you that, you know, have had an opportunity to do home projects in town, is those approvals are based on your property line. The setbacks are in relationship to your property line. And that's not something that, again, we confirm, that that's not our role in the process. And so the approvals are relative to the property line. To the extent that a survey was done, and these folks feel they've got a survey that shows their property lines were moved, the setbacks didn't change, but the relationship to the adjacent building did. Again, our code is in relationship to the property line, not the building. So the approval, you know, the approval appears to, what's being built appears to be what was approved. And we've confirmed that on-site. The relationship between the buildings changed, but that's because the property lines changed. And so, you know, I think.
Go ahead, Mr. Rubens. I got a couple of questions on that one, but go ahead.
Well, I think probably a slightly different way of saying is that the property line didn't change, but the, there might have been a representation or an expectation of where the property line was, but in actuality, the line is where it always was. It's in the place that the survey reflected it. With regard to bringing the matter up to the Planning Commission or the City Council, I'm looking at the application, and there is a very strict timeline in our ordinance to bring something up for review. So it would have to be, the way that enforcement action would occur in this is if the plans and what's being built doesn't, excuse me, if what's being built does not conform with the plans that were approved and the building permit was issued under. Because the, once a building permit is issued, we're in a different area. It is truly an enforcement area. Our office has had cases over the years where people don't build in conformance with their plans, and the city would, under those circumstances, have the ability to seek relief, to make sure that it does comply with the plans. Even sometimes minor deviations from the plans are not something that can be waived. It's something that would have to go for, if they wanted to keep it, for example, it would have to go back through a process. But if it does conform with the plans, then it does not have to come back through the process.
Well, I guess the only main, big question I have is if somebody's going to build something next to me, it's my responsibility to identify where the property line is then? And I'm not building, but I'm just a neighbor?
Well, it's, the Planning Department is reviewing plans, and the setbacks are always defined to what the property line is. So oftentimes, in these types of circumstances, fences were built years ago, and people might be assuming that the fence is where the property line is, when actually, that's not where it was.
I understand that.
And so the structure design always was within a certain amount of feet from the property line, but because where the fence was and people, where people assumed the property line was, it creates this kind of uncertainty, which does happen from time to time, I have to say.
Yeah, I just want to raise, just, this sounds a little funny coming from me right after Mr. Rubens is speaking. I would, you know, if it's of broad interest to the council at this stage, maybe we could agendize this and bring this back. I'm actually a little concerned at this point that this is a public comment item, and it's not therefore agendized, and we're actually having a very extensive discussion, which seems to go far beyond clarifying what the comments were from the resident.
And Councilmember Albert, I was just trying to clarify the process, so I understand, you're right. This is, I was speaking in general terms, that that's the process. If we want to talk about, in a general sense, this project or issues around how do we fix it, that would need to go, or as you suggested earlier, is there some way that we could try to mitigate this from, or prevent this type of variance from happening again? And that would be appropriate for future use.
And I have extended this on, Mr. Albert is correct, if, about this item, we have not agendized, we cannot talk about it in that sense. The only thing I would say is, I would just like staff to make sure that they have all the facts, and they give us the facts of what they have. We have Mr. Dresden's facts here, and I want to see what the differences are, if there are any differences. So, if we could. Okay, thank you.
That's all we'll do.
Sorry, Mr. Dresden, this is not something we can talk about. It's not an agendized item, so.
Well, we'll have, we've got your information, we'll get staff's information, and then we'll go from there.
Good point, Mr. Albert, about bringing us back, although sometimes, I know myself, I get invited, when I, it's something to do with construction, I get, just like Mr. Grokot does, since we've done it, it's like, how could this possibly happen?
I could feel all the developer, development and architectural energy surging around.
Yes, exactly. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment and items not on the posted agenda? Okay, seeing none. Senator Hill here yet? Nope, not here. Of course, I'm sure he'll announce himself when he comes, so there'd be no problem. Okay, consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine, will be elected, enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion on these items, unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Item 7.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item J as in Jack.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, oh. Did you have another?
No, just Jack.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull item M as in Mark.
Okay. So far, we have J and M. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the other items.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, items A through I, K and L.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay, we'll get to those items at the end of the meeting. Number eight is reports to council. Item 8A is update on condition of PG&E line 147 natural gas, a verbal report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Malpe, City Manager. We've placed this item on the agenda tonight to give the opportunity for the City Council and the community to have a dialogue on what's been going on with line 147. I won't attempt to repeat everything that's gone on over the last week, but I will try to summarize it quickly. Approximately a week and a half ago at this point, the city learned of internal communication within PG&E that identified safety concerns by PG&E engineer on line 147. As a result, the city manager, myself, and the City Council subsequently last Friday declared a threatened state of emergency here in San Carlos, or I guess it was a week ago, last Friday, wasn't it? We went to court. Our city attorney was successful in getting a temporary restraining order granted by the San Mateo County Superior Court, ordering PG&E to shut down line 147, which PG&E complied with late Sunday of last week, and into Monday, to shut that down. The CPUC has stepped in last week, issuing its own orders to keep line 147 shut down, and have initiated a investigation from the Safety and Enforcement Division of the PUC. We've been in pretty frequent communication with PG&E and the CPUC, as well as our federal, state, and local elected officials on this issue. It's, our assertion that we have reason to believe that there may be deficiencies and safety deficiencies in line 147, and absent the necessary evidence that those deficiencies don't exist, we felt it important to have the line shut down, to allow time to have this issue properly reviewed and investigated by the appropriate regulators. We're in the process of engaging our own special legal counsel, as well as our own special technical assistants to help the city and make sure that we take full advantage of this opportunity with the CPUC, to ask all the right questions and review all the right information regarding line 147, and what's in the ground right now, and how it's operating, and what condition it's in. There are a number of complex legal issues, as the council is aware, that the city attorney and I are working through right now. We're going to explore all the avenues and all the opportunities that might exist in reviewing line 147 to make it absolutely crystal clear as to what is the condition of that line in our city, in terms of, within the context of the CPUC investigation. That's it, in a nutshell, and that is very much a nutshell. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have this evening.
Mr. Albert?
I understand there's a PG&E representative here who I believe would like to speak.
Right. Questions?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on a question I asked the Friday night that we first declared the emergency, and that is, if, so the CPUC is going to do some kind of research and investigation on the records and what seems to be in the ground and so forth. And I remember Jay talking about pigging a line and what that meant, and how they might be able to do that or not do that. So, until things are put in at either end, so that a line, this line could be pigged, what other means do they have to do testing other than high pressure like they've done before?
They have limited ability to do additional testing beyond the pigging process, but they do do a cathodic protection testing. They also do their gas leak testing, which is done in several different ways, including, you know, a person walking the line with equipment to look for gas leaks, as well as aerial view testing that's done as well. But the next most significant test that I'm aware of that's planned for line 147 is this pigging, which is putting a probe through the line with all its fancy detection gear to evaluate, you know, what is the line? I mean, there are literally sections of that line that we all recognize. The records, you know, don't seem to be clear on what's in the ground. PG&E has acknowledged that, CPUC has acknowledged that. That's planned for 2016, so that's some time off. PG&E has been putting in the vaults on either end to allow the launch of the probe and the collection of the probe, but there are several bends and turns, miters, if you will, in the line, that the probe can't, would not be able to currently navigate right now. And so those sections would have to be replaced with sections that could be navigated by this probe before it could be done. So we're, you know, I think one of the outcomes of this is trying to push to have that done sooner rather than later.
So possibly before 2016?
I, I think, you know, that would certainly be my.
Because then the, the, and I won't, I don't want to, you know, belabor this, but then in the, in the meantime, there's only so much we can do and only a certain level of comfort we can gain from the type of testing that can be done, but we can't, are we expecting PG&E to keep this line, uh, at status quo now of, I think it's, when you say shut down, it means it does have gas in it, but it's at like 125 PSI? So we would expect it to stay that way until it can be, uh, run the pig through and figure it out for sure?
My expectation right now is that it would stay that way until we've had a proper evaluation, a proper investigation into all these issues. We have pages and pages of questions that we're developing at this point with the CPUC. We expect to have many more questions that we'd like to see the investigation addressed. We've made numerous records requests. PG&E's been able to provide some of that data to date, but is currently working on providing quite a bit more to both the city and the CPUC. And so I think it's just too soon to say what our expectation would be. Right now, our expectation is that there would be a very thorough, uh, evaluation and investigation into the pipeline that will hopefully answer the questions that we feel need to be answered so that, you know, you all, the decision makers of San Carlos, can feel that you're making, you know, some informed recommendations, again, just, you know, for full disclosure for the public. We do not control that pipeline, we do not regulate that pipeline. I'm sure we all very much wish right now we did, but we don't. And so we have to work with PG&E and the CPUC, those folks that do own and operate the pipeline and those folks that do regulate the pipeline, to make sure all those questions are answered.
Okay.
I actually did have a question.
Okay. Sure.
Just, uh, very quickly, Mr. Malpe. Um, one of the things that seems to be a hallmark of some of these issues and in fact occurred in San Carlos is, is, uh, pipe is exhumed for whatever reason and it turns out, oops, it doesn't match the records. With my background in the pharmaceutical industry, one of the thoughts that had occurred is, has anything ever been done about selecting at random sections of the line, or a line, and basically digging it up, seeing what it looks like? Um, you know, that would be a way of testing how accurate the records were.
Yeah, I don't think anything quite like that has been suggested, but I, you know, in my conversations with PG&E representatives, they seem to be taking an approach that focuses on areas that might be fuzzy in terms of the records, where there's some dispute, or their records are of such an age, or the pipe is of such an age that they feel there's a weakness. In other words, their, their feeling, I think, is, you know, if a section of pipe was replaced five years ago, likely they have the records and those records are good, whereas if it was done 25 years ago, perhaps it's in an era where it's not. Now, I do understand that there are other sections of line 147 that are, um, according to PG&E, in dispute within their own records. And they are planning, um, I think in the next couple of months, to dig up some sections of line 147 to see what's exactly in the ground. And, you know, they're picking one spot that they hope informs them on the spots next to it. If they're, if that doesn't clear up the conflict, then they may do more spots and more spots and more spots, but right now, there's one plan to dig and as many as four, from what I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malpe. I do have one speaker card, Poppya Gambleen of PG&E.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Poppya Gambleen, I'm Regional Director at PG&E. Jeff Malpe, the City Manager, did a really nice job in summarizing the points, so I want to thank Jeff. Tonight, I wanted to provide you with a brief update on our PG&E's count, uh, PG&E's customer outreach efforts, uh, regarding line 147. Last Friday on October 11th, 26 of our employees from our customer care organization handed out, uh, letters to residents and businesses along line 147. So we delivered approximately 800 letters. Uh, we provided letters to city staff and I believe they were, um, posted online. We had approximately 240 personal customer interactions throughout the day. The majority of the customers' interactions were positive. It was really nice to talk with our customers and get some feedback from them. We finished today the center line survey, uh, this center line survey activity, as many of you have heard, it's been going on throughout our service area, but particularly on the peninsula through the summer, where, and our customers have been notified when we're in the area surveying our pipes. The purpose of the survey, just to quickly recap, it's to mark and locate and map where the center of the pipeline is. It's also, uh, the survey is designed to also provide us information on whether or not there's any structures or anything that's, that's prohibiting us from safely operating that pipe. We document that and then we'll also have a system in which we can communicate the concerns that we learn as we do our field survey. But I wanted to share that all of our interactions were very positive when we went out to speak with our customers. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we look forward to working with PG&E and the CPUC in solving this issue.
Yes, us as well. Thank you.
Okay. Comments on this? Mr. Albert, you had a comment?
Actually, uh, my comment was actually going to be about a hearing that's being held by a gentleman who, since I was going to make the comment, has stepped into our chambers later this month, so perhaps he would like to make some comments about that.
Well, I'd rather not have Senator Hill speak on that. He's, um, if you have a comment, that'd be fine.
Okay, that's fine. Um, then Senator Hill, just, uh, after speaking with you this afternoon, I was pleased to hear that you're going to be having those hearings later this month, um, and, uh, I hope we will have an opportunity to have representatives from San Carlos there to weigh in on them.
Great. All right. Senator Hill, please, uh, I want you to, we'll go back to item seven, or 5B, where we're going to have a resolution to Yvette Royce in honor of late former Mayor Randy Royce, so that the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, honorable council members. It really is a pleasure to be here this evening and, and I have to say that, you know, when you go through life, um, you run into people, obviously, uh, and you never know how they're going to affect or impact your life. Um, and, you know, when you run into someone and you meet them and you talk with them and you interact with them, and, um, and then you turn around and it's always something that is a very special feeling that comes from that. And then when you interact intellectually, you interact socially, in every way, there's always something special about that interaction. And that's what it was with me and Randy Royce. Every time I saw him, every time we were together, whether it was with, in something involved in government, or whether it was running into each other someplace, you couldn't miss him because there was that smile. That smile that just captivated you no matter where you went and the strength that he had and that positive personality just always was just captivating and just so full of energy. And it was, um, it was a time for me when we were chatting and we'd always, you know, kind of talk and catch up every once in a while and, and hear about, you know, what he was doing and where he was in terms of whether it was about the soccer in the past or the schools. I just came from, uh, Tierra Linda Middle School, presenting them with the Distinguished School Award. And as I was walking through the, the campus and going to the library for the PTA meeting, I was, uh, kind of struck and just thinking about all the kids that are in that school that will be and have been in one way or another touched by Randy Royce because of what he brought to the city of San Carlos. And that's a legacy that no one can ever take away from him and no one can ever take away from the city of San Carlos. And so it was very special and touching for me to have that relationship with him. And I know that those who saw him and were with him, no matter the trouble, the trials, the challenges he was facing throughout the last time of his life, uh, he was always so upbeat, so positive, and always had that smile on his face. Um, I could, never seen anyone with the strength that that man had. And it, uh, it certainly rubbed off on me, um, and I think that strength is a part of all of us today because we're all better people because of our knowing, our working with and our relationship with Randy Royce. So I, uh, in the State Senate, we adjourned our session in memory and honoring Randy and his great accomplishments and we have, and I have, uh, from the state of California, just a little memento of a resolution from the Senate, the California Legislature, a memorial resolution for Randy Royce that I'd like to present if I may. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to do this.
Sure. May I? Yvette, would you like to say something? You don't have to.
No.
Okay. Fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Hill, very much. I know that, uh, I speak for everyone up here and, and everyone who's ever met Randy to echo all the comments that you made, so thank you very much for doing that. And, uh, thank you, Yvette, for being here with at least one of your boys, because the other one, I'm sure, is out of the area, and some friends and stuff to accept this, so terrific. Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to our next item.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before we
Yes.
...move on to the next item, I think we'd like to return to the PG&E item for just a second. The city attorney would like to make one quick comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. Okay.
I just, um, wanted to make it clear to the, the council and the public that, um, you know, the proceeding, the proceedings before the CPUC right now, there's not only a Safety and Enforcement Division that is, um, has issued an order to keep the pipeline in the shutdown status, but there's also an order from the CPUC itself that's requiring PG&E to recertify line 147. And as part of that process, PG&E is producing documents and the burden of proof is on PG&E, this is the main point I wanted to make, to, to recertify the safety of the line. Um, the burden's not on the city of San Carlos, but we're, as part of our, um, role as, and it, um, the fact that we're going to be coming and become an interested party in the action, that will give us the opportunity to ask the relevant questions that the city manager was talking about, to ensure that the, that, that the goal of the city and to ensure that the process is such that we will have a, a safe line one way or another. What that solution is, is not clear now because, um, the experts will have to speak and the CPUC will have to review the information, but that's the goal, that's what the law says. The line has to be safe and the CPUC is charged with doing that.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. All right. We'll move on then to, uh, the next item, which is 8B, update on the consolidation of fire services in Redwood City. Deputy Chief Mopin, welcome.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Stan Mopin, your deputy fire chief. And I want to take a moment to say thank you for allowing us to come up and give you a quick, uh, just overview and review of the first quarter of the full services fire service contract that we entered into on July 1. I want to take also a moment to, uh, just reemphasize to the public, as those of us who were, were well involved with this process for the last couple of years, uh, staff and council, we were very aware of what we were entering into, but I wanted just to reemphasize to the public that it is still the San Carlos Fire Department. It still exists, it's still, and it still is, is one entity and it's just being staffed by the Redwood City Fire Department, but the San Carlos Fire Department does still exist and I think the citizens should be proud of that and the council should be proud of that, uh, also. I wanted to take a moment and put up the organizational chart of the Redwood City-San Carlos Fire Department. Through the partnership of the two cities, you can see that the size of the fire department is quite large and it actually, through the contract, uh, shows what the resources that can be drawn upon, uh, for the citizens of San Carlos and what's available to, uh, ensure their safety and to bring, uh, fire protection to their community. It's quite large and you can see that the fire chief, obviously, is at the top and with the deputy right below him, and you see many lines coming off the deputy, but a couple coming off the fire chief, and that's just, uh, kind of the way we set up the structure on this one. Uh, for the first quarter, we're covering July 1 to September 30th of this year. Uh, during the first quarter, again, July 1, we kicked off the full services contract and actually on July 30th, we held a celebration and acknowledgement of the 25 new employees, uh, from San Carlos into Redwood City and many, uh, many members of the council and staff are there and it was greatly appreciated. Not seven days into the contract, we had a very, a very large fire in Redwood City on Woodside Road, uh, ultimately went to six alarms, uh, many people were rescued and it was one of the more challenging fires in Redwood City's history. Now, the fire taking place in Redwood City, the only reason I bring this point up is that the resources that are available to the city of San Carlos are identical to the city of Redwood City. Should we have an event of this size and magnitude, the available resources and logistical support beyond just the fire engines and ladder trucks at the time of the fire and the recovery effort is available to the city of San Carlos also through this agreement. And I think the council is to be applauded on entering into an agreement that brings that kind of a, a load of resources and logistical support to the city of San Carlos. And again, uh, we talked about the number of resources available. During the first quarter, we took delivery of, of a brand new fireboat, uh, the Sequoia Guardian, which was named and, uh, brought in a, or being brought into service in September and was acquired through a Department of Homeland Security grant. Now, somebody may ask, what does a fireboat do for San Carlos at this point? But really what it does is it gives us the ability to also support land firefighting operations also in a disaster. Uh, but again, it's just another indicator of the amount of resources available to the city of San Carlos through this contract. I'm going to blur the lines a little bit in the first quarter and go into an event that happened last Sunday, our kickoff to Fire Prevention Week, which is in October. Uh, we had a, a large community event, uh, at the fire department. Uh, we had over 2,000 people attend and see, uh, see various demonstrations of what the fire department can provide, uh, many, uh, shows of additional, uh, resources in the county that are available, uh, some, some jumpy slides, hot dogs, uh, fire extinguisher demonstrations, those types of things that were available to the community. Through this, uh, public education event, I also want to note that during the first quarter, we had nine public education events in the city of San Carlos alone where we contacted over 300 people, uh, whether it's students or station tours or events that we went to, to educate the public on fire safety. And that's just, that's, you know, we anticipate that is at least a minimum of the amount of contacts we'll be making and continued on as we outreach to the public. And I know that's a, that's a big, uh, concern for the councils that we reach the public and we keep them informed beyond just going on the calls. Uh, as, as Councilmember Clapper knows, we're also heavily involved in the CERT program, which we're working on consistently updating and, uh, doing additional work on that. Um, at the next update, I will also have some numbers on some things that will be happening with CERT, but we, that's a very active program in the community that's continuing on. Uh, during the first quarter, just a quick breakdown on the number of calls that were responded to, and you see the number 488 in San Carlos, that's the number of calls actually in San Carlos in that quarter. Uh, so the resources either from Redwood City or San Carlos did cross lines back and forth as we do on a day-to-day basis to support each other, but those are the number of, numbers of emergency calls that occurred in San Carlos and Redwood City and then combined. Uh, this is a combined breakdown of the percentages of types of calls that, that were responded to. Now, this first slide is San Carlos and Redwood City together. Uh, I'd like to go to the second slide and then break out for you the definition of some of these calls because they are a little confusing. As we move to the San Carlos slide, the numbers, percentages are not too far off from Redwood, the, the total count, they're about the same. Uh, some of the types of calls that are up there are false calls, which are, uh, false alarms, uh, calls that were not, had no merit to them, had nothing to respond on. Uh, good intent calls, which is listed there also, uh, good intent calls are, uh, somebody sees smoke and it's really steam, or some type of call that is, uh, a wrong location or some type of call that really has no merit also. Uh, the last one is, it's not self-explanatory, hazardous conditions, uh, power lines down, hazmat calls, those types of incidents that, uh, we respond to also on a daily basis. As we get into the next slide, we have, uh, the, the visual on the left is, uh, our rendition of what we call Squad Nine. Uh, as you probably are aware, that Engine Nine has been browned out for a couple of years now in our downtown station. We're working on right now to bring up by, uh, January, bring up a squad of firefighter, or I mean, I'm sorry, a paramedic and a captain to staff to reduce the workload on the ladder truck that runs out of Station Nine. What this does is that makes the ladder truck much more reliable in its ability to respond to calls that it's more, uh, that it's designed to handle. Uh, it also brings additional staffing to various types of calls in San Carlos and Redwood City. Uh, for example, a structural fire would get more people now, uh, based on using this squad model that we're putting in place. This is becoming a very popular design in the state. Uh, we're hearing more and more fire departments getting a little bit away from the traditional fire engine, fire truck model and going back to, everything comes around in cyclical, but going back to a squad model also in delivering service. The, uh, the item on the right is our, our brand new breathing support, which we use to, uh, fill our air bottles at incidents, but it's also used for the rehab of firefighters on calls. This is actually an asset that's owned by the county through OES and contracted into Redwood City and we provide that support of that vehicle into the whole south zone of the county. Currently, the breathing support is owned by Redwood City. This is a brand new vehicle that's just coming into stock and there's three of them in the county, but it provides the additional resource, uh, support to our firefighters. On the left is, uh, we're in the, in the process of working through purchasing a new fire engine. Uh, the oldest fire engine in the fleet is two years past its replacement date, uh, a decision that was made, uh, uh, on purpose to delay the replacement of that until we could get things settled down some more. Um, but we are in the process of buying, uh, buying a brand new engine. The, uh, engine on the right is more an example of what we're buying. The engine on the left is not the one we're replacing, it just happens to be the antique fire engine we had. It just happens to be the antique fire engine we had in the picture from the, from the slide. As you know, we're also looking at, we're, we're still going through the data right now, analyzing the potential consolidation of two fire stations, one in Redwood City, one in San Carlos, on a joint border, to reduce the costs of, these, both these stations are well in need of replacement, and the ability to replace them, and a joint venture would reduce the cost of the one-time investment and then also the ongoing operating costs. Those numbers and facts will be presented to council as we get that finalized. What else is going on is we're beginning the, the process of creating a strategic plan for the Fire Department specifically. This is something that we're, we're working on so we can predict and project the future of where the Fire Department, we anticipate them going, or where we're going. This is quite a, quite an in-depth process that many departments are starting to undertake more and more frequently. But it's just, just as you know, for a strategic plan at any level, it's just a roadmap to lay out where we want to go. We're also continually auditing the, the performance of the contract that's currently in place. We're doing that in anticipation of, as is lined out in the contract, the official audit that will be requested. But we're going through that to make sure that we're meeting the, the performance standards of the contract and that we have a more seamless and more easily accomplished audit when the time comes to do an official audit. We're working with the Administrative Services Director on that also. One final thing in the sense of the personnel within the Fire Department. We have some upcoming promotional tests, which all personnel in both departments, well, actually, in the one department, I apologize, are eligible for. And we're also hiring some new firefighters, getting a list together for possible replacement of folks that may retire over the next couple of years. We like to have that list ready to go. I do want to take a moment, I skipped one point on the, talked about the large fire in Redwood City at the very beginning of my presentation. One point of interest maybe for the council is that we're issuing 17 medals of lifesaving and outstanding duty awards on that fire based on the performance done, just something we haven't seen in a long, long time. Almost 50% of those are being awarded either a lifesaving medal or an outstanding duty medal are former San Carlos employees. So quite a, quite an accomplishment on that part. With that said, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief Moplin. Questions? Mr. Brokaw?
I guess I'll put these as comments, questions. I don't know, we can take them as, as you want. I know this is just an informational item, and it's not, you know, anything more than that, but a couple of things strike me in hearing your report, which, thank you very much for what you put together here. One thing that strikes me is looking at the call volume and looking at the totals versus San Carlos's portion of that. And something that looks a little high for us of the total is on false, false calls. And I recall when Mr. Grisilla and I were serving on the fire board when we had the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, that was something that we struggled with, was getting a lot of false calls, and how do we tone that down? We tried to identify where they were coming from, and we're able to mitigate that to some extent by identifying who the culprit was. There were a couple of properties that seemed to be significant. But I just highlight that because it, you know, I recognize when we, when 48 of the calls out of the 150 are ours, seems to me there's some issue there potentially. The other thing that strikes me is, and I don't know where we, we go with this, but as, as we see things like this alternative service delivery model, which looks very interesting, is a level of frustration on my part when, you know, you, at one time being so involved in, in fire service and the whole safety issue, you know, whether it was EMS or whatever, and now we, we essentially write a contract to Redwood City and we watch it happen. The question comes to my mind is, how do we, A, become informed as policymakers on what are the things that are out there like this type of model? And B, when we recognize those things and if we want to move that direction, how do we, as a, as a city council, involve ourselves in that process so that our contract with Redwood City becomes what we, as a community, want out of the service of the Fire Department?
Sure. And we've, and as we're looking at this and we're coming into, coming into the, the first quarter of, of running this model as it is, one of the things that we're, we're very aware of is that, as we said, as partners, we're going to be working through what, what the menu of options could be and those types of things. And then certainly through the city manager, Fire Department staff will make sure that those options are available to council and that any other concepts or ideas that could be out there also are, are brought forward to the council for consideration.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And by the way, I think maybe to address one of my concerns, in a way we can see that happen, is, is your participation in our council retreat when we have our strategic planning, and we certainly appreciate you guys showing up there and participating in that, in that action. Or it's not really an action, but that process.
And we, and we appreciate being involved in it. It helps us understand better the needs of the San Carlos community.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Chief Moplin. Just a quick question, you know, one of the big stress points when, that motivated us to want to develop the close relationship that exists today, had to do with overtime and, and I suppose, put bluntly, kind of the risk of burning out staff. I just was curious about where we stand on that. I don't necessarily know if you, I'm not asking for specific figures, but just in general, how are things trending on that?
Anecdotally, we're seeing, we're starting to see the decline, the, certainly the ability to have some relief staff, which is what we, you know, we put in part, as part of the contract for both cities, has had a, has had an impact on reducing the amount of overtime we've had. This, looking at this alternative delivery, service delivery model, will also kind of give us more flexibility to be able to keep those numbers in check. And we're, we've seen, anecdotally for tonight, we've seen a definitely decrease in the amount of overtime that's being worked. I can get those numbers to the, to the council, to the manager, as we get them hardened up and go from there.
I would appreciate that, just because it's, I mean, it's a, there's no one perfect metric, but it's kind of a good metric about the, the health of the system.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Thank you for your presentation, Deputy Chief Moplin. I just have one question. I'm just wondering, have you run into any issues that have arisen? I realize it's only been, what, three and a half months since this all came together? Anything you hadn't anticipated that's happened, that you feel that has been better than you expected, or maybe hasn't worked out the way you wanted, that you're trying to figure out how to make better?
You know, at this point, I'm going to take the, the angle on what's better than we expected. And I think what, what it is, is the blending of the workforces and the ability for them to operate seamlessly together. You know, even though operationally, as a county, we operate as one fire department, as you're all well aware, you know, certainly the day-to-day things are, can be difficult to coordinate. We've been very pleased with how the staffs have come together and worked almost as if they've been together for a long time. And we, we attribute that to the, the almost two years of, of working side-by-side in the, the initial contract, as helping kind of erase those things. It kind of gave us a chance to figure out where, where some of the landmines might be for us ahead of time. That really made the transition on July 1 almost seamless. And we, we kind of joked that the only thing that changed on July 1 was they put on different T-shirts. You know, they, they continued to work together, you know, fantastic.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Clapper, any questions?
Just a quick comment. I really wanted to thank all of the staff at the Art and Wine Fair for the, all the information that was out there. There was some great activities for the, for the kids, and as the afternoons were getting a little bit warm, some of them were getting cranky, and they, they really enjoyed being able to check out the, the fire trucks and be able to sit down with some of the staff and do some projects. So thank you very much. That was a great example of one of the public awareness programs.
Absolutely. And I'm assuming it's the kids that were cranking at the staff.
Well, I'll talk to you about that later.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we, again, we, you know, we were really enjoying, you know, the outreach that we're able to provide to the community, so.
I just had a couple of quick, I'm sorry, did you finish? I didn't want to interrupt. Couple of quick, any compare, the first quarter statistics, any, I don't know if you were, you were even, the numbers before then were even available to you, or did you see anything that was like, gee, this is, this is really goofy?
Yeah, we, we haven't taken a chance to sit down and directly compare them, you know, side-by-side, but from just our experience over the last two years in, in managing the San Carlos Fire Department and now providing the staffing for it, we've seen no outliers and no anomalies on that, that, that really caused us to scratch our heads at all.
Great. And the other, last question is, when is the medal ceremony going to be?
October 24th, and it should be announced, we're coming out in any day now.
Probably in the daytime, or?
Actually, it's going to be an evening event at the Hotel Sofitel, and it's actually in conjunction with the Redwood City Police Department.
Okay.
It's actually, it's actually their event that we're, we're coming in on based on the, the fire.
Okay. We'll, we'll get information about that. Hopefully, somebody will get it. Great. Thank you.
I'm shocked that the Police Department is allowing you to celebrate with them.
Well, we haven't really told them we're coming yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Moplin. That should be good. Appreciate your report. And Chief Skinner, thank you for being here. John, Chief Pucci, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is item 8C, a report on the County of San Mateo Supervisory District Boundary Adjustments.
This is Jenny Liu, Senior Management Analyst. Tonight, I'll be presenting on the issue of the County of San Mateo Supervisory District Boundary Adjustment. Just want to start off with some background information. The Board of Supervisors created a nine-member District Lines Advisory Committee after voters changed the county charter in November 2012. The change requires that only voters within a district can elect a supervisor who lives in that same district to represent them. And under the prior system, voters county-wide elected all five supervisors. In April 2013, District Lines Advisory Committee was tasked to take public comment and consider adjusting the district lines. Between June and September, the committee held 10 public meetings in various different parts of the county to reach out to the public and receive public comments on the issue. Last Tuesday, October 8, a meeting at the county center, the committee recommended three maps. The first one is the Community Unity 4C. And this map will not impact San Carlos. We are in District 3, so I just want to highlight a few items that will impact our district. San Mateo Highlands will move to District 3. Redwood City is united in District 4. Mellow Oaks will move from 4 to 3. And Mellow Park, east of El Camino Real, moves into District 3 from District 4. The second proposal is a community, for the, for the committee is the Republic AA Equity Map. This one will split San Carlos along Oak County Road. Approximately 4.8% of the population east of the split will be in District 4, and the rest of 95.2% will remain in District 3. Some highlights for District 3, Redwood City will be united in District 4. Sequoia Track will move from 3 to 4, and Mellow Oaks will move from 4 to 3. The last map, Nakamura 1G, is the least discussed during the meeting. And again, this map will not impact San Carlos. Just a few highlights, Redwood City will be united in District 4. Sequoia Track will move from District 3 to 4. Mellow Oaks move from District 4 to 3. And Mellow Park will be divided, and part of it will be going to District 4. The Board of Supervisors, Supervisors are undecided as to which map they will use. Furthermore, they would like staff to bring back more maps to the 22nd meeting. Supervisors are requesting hybrid Community Unity and Republican AA Equity Map that will keep San Mateo whole, possibly bring back the precinct cleanup map that was one out of the 31 maps District Line Advisory Committee considered. A decision must be made by November 5 under the settlement of the November 2012 lawsuit, which challenged whether then enlarged the system diluted minority voting strength.
Okay.
That ends my presentation.
I'm sure there's about 77,000 questions, probably most of which you may not be able to answer, but thank you for standing there. Questions? Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'd just be interested if you know anything about why of those three plans, the one that does carve off about 5% of San Carlos and put it in a different district, what was the logic behind that of the people who were putting the plan together?
So, I checked the documents online, and I attended that meeting from last Tuesday. There wasn't a very good rationale, or at least when I know that's made this proposal to split San Carlos. However, if this is something that you wish, we do have the option to write a letter to the Board of Supervisors, maybe requesting some information as to why they're splitting San Carlos in this, in this option.
Fair enough. Actually, when we get to the point of talking about what we do, I have a different letter I'd like to ask that we write.
I'm going to tell you this, this is going to get gored in this process. Some city is not going to be happy, if not some sitties. Other questions?
No questions, just comments.
Okay. Jenny, thank you so much, and we'll come up with some comments here and see what we want to do, but thanks for bringing us up to speed on this. Comments? Mr. Brokaw?
Just the opening line, I guess, to Mr. Albert's question. I've gone to some of the things with this and talked to people who primarily put together the AA Equity Plan. And the reason is because on the, on that side of San Carlos, for example, you know, our overall, for instance, our overall Hispanic community in San Carlos is a very small percentage. But when you look at the east side, it's about 24% of the population. And what they're trying to do with that map and what they were trying to do with some of these others, even although they didn't all split San Carlos, as you can readily see, is put communities of interest together as opposed to just cities. Their, cities are, you know, rather arbitrary in having boundaries and so forth based on just the history of the state and when things got incorporated and so forth. And what, what the goals with some of these districts are, is to put together communities of interest based on socioeconomic and racial groupings, if you will, so.
Mr. Albert?
The comment that I alluded to is, I personally would like to see us, you know, I certainly am going to do this individually, but I wouldn't mind seeing the council authorize the mayor to send a letter urging the Board of Supervisors that they not split up San Carlos. I think, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're quite right that everybody's going to make that argument. On the other hand, having been involved with, with school issues for many years, I can tell you that one of the most difficult things that was done to San Carlos was when they split the boundaries for Carmenton-Sequoia High School years ago. And that was, as best I can reconstruct it, that was because our colleagues in Belmont were a little bit quicker off the dime in terms of, of getting some arguments in front of the board at the time as to why the division ought to be done the way it ended up being done. So I'm, you know, maybe late in the process, I don't know, but I at least like us to weigh in and say, we really don't think for the following reasons that this is a good idea. Chief, or which for me, would simply be, this is a small community. It is actually, in my experience with other communities, it is fairly tightly knit, and splitting a small, relatively tightly knit community doesn't strike me as a good thing to do.
Other comments?
I just want to completely agree with what Councilmember Albert said. I, it makes absolutely no sense to look at splitting this community in any way.
Okay. Ms. Clapper, any comment?
Well, the purist in me would like to see the community, our, our whole city stay in one district. I'm not completely adverse to the lines being, being drawn elsewhere, because I, I think that you can also find advantages as a city where you have two supervisors involved with what is going on within your city boundaries. So I think there, there are ways to leverage it as a benefit either way, and so I'm not going to predispose my preference based on where the lines fall, particularly in San Carlos. I'm more concerned with the, the grouping of the overall districts and how it makes sense in terms of how the county is going to go about doing their work. And so I'm, I'm very interested in, in seeing what their observations are on these additional maps that they're going to be taking a look at. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So my earlier comment was just to Mark's question, but to the point of whether or not we end up split or not split, Karen raised a good point. It was mentioned today in the, I think, the editor of The Post wrote a column about these maps. And after reading his column, I would rather agree, if there, if there were a way we could split San Carlos three ways. I would go with that, because...
Let's not get carried away.
Well, because the, the reason being is then you have three individuals on the Board of Supervisors who care about San Carlos in a more close-knit manner, because they, they're getting elected from there. They're, they, you know, they have people who are going to vote for them there. So I would almost argue for going that direction. With regards to the map and the way the two are, or the, there's these two options, either we're split or not split, I, I don't have strong feelings about it one way or the other, except to say that it's the east side, obviously, that's getting carved off.[1794.01] that it's the east side, obviously, that's getting carved off. And my recommendation to the east side would be if they're strongly concerned about that, A, we should back them as a council, and B, they should make their voices heard at these hearings that the county's having.
Yeah, I would tend to, on this one, I think I'm sort of old-school in that, I don't know, Ms. Mop, do you know, right now, the districts are not, the cities aren't broken up, are they?
Some of them are.
There's a couple of them.
I mean, I'm talking about...
They're broken up.
There are some? There are broken up? Okay. And of course, Mellow Park has got the same issue with their east side, I believe, on almost every one of these ones. And there, I know Councilmember Keith is very, very adamant that she's very concerned about that, despite the fact of what Mr. Price said in the paper, which I read also this morning. I would tend to come down on Mr. Albert's side and Mr. Collins' side that we sit down, I'll sit down with the city manager and write a letter, quite honestly, asking if we could keep us together. I think it's a good thing we are a close-knit community. I believe that's, especially considering that the east side, again, is unfortunately the focus of this, and they seem to be the focus of a lot of things these days. And I think it would be good if we could keep it all together. But as I mentioned in the first line, somebody's going to get split up. The bigger cities are just adamant that they don't want to be split up. San Mateo and Redwood City, and I don't know where the political power is going to come from or the pressure is. There were two supervisors on this committee, and I don't envy them, and they have, you know, again, asked for more information, again, trying to balance it off, as you say, in all these different ways, so. Mr. Mayor? Yes?
Just a couple of comments. You know, Mellow Park is, as I see, it's sort of a different animal. I went to the meeting they had in East Palo Alto, and there were a number of people who got up from East Palo Alto and East Mellow Park who spoke wanting to be joined together because their interests are one thing versus what's going on on the other side of 101, economically, socially, the way that their neighborhoods are set up and so forth. And so, they were actually people from that community looking for that, regardless of what Ms. Keith is saying. But I think in our case, I would agree with you to, you know, go ahead and write a letter. I would ask, if we could, could we reach out to the, you know, the greater east side community has an organization, maybe we could reach out to them and just get a word from them on that.
I'd be happy to do that. And I would imagine that they would want to stay together with us because going, well, again, I'd be happy to do that.
I would think so, but...
Yeah, I can do that.
Just to add on that, I think Councilmember Grokot's observations about sections of Mellow Park reminded me, in fact, I think I could summarize most of the arguments being made by members of our east side community who have been in our chambers very frequently over the last few years, is they really want to be part of our community, and they actually feel that every time there's an opportunity to not consider them part of our community, that seems in their mind to be the route we're taking, which is not what we're doing.
No.
But, you know, why make it worse?
No, I agree, and that's the focal, as I said, the focal point on a lot of these issues. So, anyway, so Mr. City Manager will sit down and figure out some way to go on the next step. Okay, thank you. Next item we have is 9A, unfinished business, consideration of accepting the city's economic development plan update fiscal year 2013-14.
My name is Edessa Bippadel, the Economic Development Coordinator. I'm here this evening to present to you the 2013-14 economic plan update and to address In 2007, the City Council approved a comprehensive economic development plan. In 2010, the City Council approved the economic development plan with timelines and objectives for the next three years. With the fall of the Redmond Agency, in 2012, the city reevaluated the economic development plan and reset priorities. Today, we will be discussing the economic development plan update 2013-14. If I had to describe this updated plan, I would say that the economic development plan update is innovative and proactive. It brings visibility to the many ways that we support and enhance the business climate and quality of life in the city of San Carlos. In 2012, the city had to revisit its priorities. Since we no longer had Redmond Agency funding, we refocused and regrouped. The City Council approved the following priorities. First, Wheeler Plaza development. Two, conduct fiscal analysis of sites. Three, customize recruitment packages. Four, ambassador teams with city staff, council members, visiting with five businesses. Five, strategic property acquisition reserve policy. Six, our first-ever building home improvement showcase event. And seven, vacant and underutilized property hot sheet. The status briefing for each item is on the screen, and it is included in your packet. Overarching values and goals. The economic development plan focuses on revenue generation, and at the same time, it reflects our community's values. We have a great city with an enviable downtown, and the economic development plan builds on that rather than reinvents it. At the same time, we do not want to miss out on the upswings in the economy. Rationale for economic development plan elements. What can we do to maximize our staff time and revenue to the city? With property business, transient occupancy tax, and sales taxes, the economic development plan can have a positive effect on the fiscal health of our city and services. Diversifying our industries and sales tax base will ensure fiscal sustainability during the economic downturns. That is why having additional transient occupancy taxes from new hotel would be beneficial to the city. Retention and expansion. As the economy is improving, companies are outgrowing their spaces. They are looking for places to expand. We want to make sure that we have the space for them to move into. That strategy would also help to keep our businesses in our city. During the September 4th study session, council members and members of the EDAC committee had discussions on the top priorities. The top four categories that are listed here are reflective of conversations that took place. The top four elements are: Major, one, major catalyst projects; two, ongoing retention, expansion, attraction, and promotion programs; three, ensure adequate workforce housing; four, ongoing and other administrative tasks. On September 24th, EDAC approved and recommended the City Council accept the economic development Number one strategy is the major catalyst projects. Within that area, we have three major areas. First is landmark site. The goal is to encourage hotel, Class A, office footage for high-tech, biotech, or medical offices. Number two, Wheeler Plaza. Get approval to transfer successor agency properties. We are waiting for the Department of Finance to make the determination on transfer of property to the developer. Number three is Transit Village. Consider project approval consistent with community vision. This project is currently going through the city's process. Strategy number two: Ongoing retention, expansion, attraction, and promotion programs. Economic development plan will not be successful without a proactive retention, expansion, attraction, promotion program. This strategy is an ongoing effort. Our goal is to visit five more of the top 25 employers and tax generators. With each visit, there are requests and follow-ups that need to be accomplished. The end result is that the CEOs, managers, and business owners appreciate our interest in their success and contribution to our community. These meetings are attended by members of the City Council, city manager, community development director, and economic development staff. Less formal outreach is being currently conducted by economic development staff. In the last two weeks, I've visited with 20 small downtown businesses. We will update you on a quarterly basis in the city's newsletter. Attraction promotion, and this is still within the second strategy. Economic development website is an important place where people go to learn about our community. Our goal is to improve the navigation, create new content, and add more content that will tell our story. Social media is also another tool to aggressively communicate our message. It will communicate positive messages and then lead the reader to the website for more content. Commercial brokers have a good pulse of local real estate market activities. Keeping in constant contact and attending their events gives us an in-depth understanding of regional and local real estate markets and trends forecast. Strengthening our relationship with brokers will also help us fill vacancies and bring ideal tenants to our community. Lastly, identifying opportunities to repurpose and redevelop underutilized properties is an important part of business attraction program. Strategy number three: Ensure adequate workforce housing. Workforce housing is also important for employers. Whether it is the Silicon Valley Leadership Group that represents 375 companies, or through our business retention activities in the past year, employers are concerned with lack of local housing and opportunities for their workforce. Lack of adequate workforce housing has an impact on the economic health of local employers. We intend to address this issue as we prepare our new housing element in the next year. Strategy number four: The great news is that we have already accomplished a first task under this category, and that is to hire the Economic Development Coordinator. In the last year, we have invested a lot of time in administrating the successor agency. It is an important task that needs to be done and done correctly. Internal and external communications are also important aspects of the economic development plan. Through the quarterly report, we will communicate the progress of the economic development plan to the City Council. Also, through an electronic newsletter, we will communicate proactively about positive activities in our community. The economic dashboard will also be available on our website. It will make the data available and accessible to the public with only a couple of clicks. In conclusion, the economic development plan update is prioritizing and focusing our efforts through an integrated approach. Other ideas and special projects. These are some other brainstorming ideas that we have gathered from stakeholders. Once we have accomplished our goals from the top four priorities, we can come back to the City Council and revisit the list. This concludes my presentation for this evening. Economic Development, EDAC has forwarded the economic development plan update for review and acceptance. I am available for questions, and so is Al Savay, the Community Development Director. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. Questions? Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bippadel. That was a good report, and welcome aboard. The question I had is, and I may have missed it in your presentation, do we have an effort underway to look for or think about developing a program that would help foster some commercial property consolidation? Because there's some parts of the city where that seems to be a rate-limiting step to certain types of new incremental investment that might take place.
That looks like it's under the attraction program, which is identifying opportunities to repurpose or redevelop underutilized properties. And that is part of the program that we're looking into.
Okay.
Other questions?
And when we're attracting businesses, of course, we want to have space for them. Our vacancy rates are really low, so that is one way and opportunity to bring in ideal businesses.
Other questions? If not, then someone make a motion to accept this report?
Are we, so, we're not having any discussion on it?
Oh, fine, but why don't we make the motion? If there's a motion, then we can discuss it.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept this report.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion. Mr. Grokot?
Excuse me. One of the things that is apparent to me is, and I think all of us, is, you know, we have a very special downtown. And as I attended the Art and Wine Fair this weekend, I heard that from a number of folks, both who live in San Carlos and people who like to visit San Carlos. Particularly, I can think of two individuals who live in Redwood Shores, and think of our downtown as their downtown because it's too far to, you know, go to Redwood City, which is really what they're a part of. But I think there needs to be some kind of acknowledgement of what we have there in this document, and perhaps, you know, I'd be reluctant to necessarily freeze ourselves in time and place on Laurel Street. In other words, you know, setting up some kind of policies or guidelines or development decrees that say, you know, you can only build one story, you have to leave what's there, those kinds of things. Because I think those kinds of things can get dangerous when, if you have a change in your economy or the marketplace or whatever, you want to be able to adequately and freely move to answer to what the market wants. But on the other hand, I think something that identifies that this is a particular gem that we have, and we should be very careful with how we do allow it to change or develop so that we don't lose what we have. One of the other, and these are just anecdotal comments, I realize, but not to pick on any other cities, so I won't even name what cities, but I was talking to one individual, and they were comparing us to other places on the peninsula, and they said, but you guys are just really special because, you know, you don't require paid parking, and you've got all these nice restaurants and stores that are owned by small businesses and so forth, not the, you know, the only thing we had really downtown that was more of a chain, yeah, retailer, was Blockbuster, and Blockbuster went out of business because technology changed and actually opened up an opportunity for us to put in something that is far more fitting for our downtown. But anyways, I won't go on and on about it, but I just think there, I would like to see something in this. I could approve this, but I would like to see EDAC take a look at our downtown and what we might do to put in place some protections, but again, protections that don't allow us not to move if we need to move. Does anybody concur with that?
I have some thoughts on that, that maybe it would be good for us to take a look at what the general plan shares with us about the downtown, because there's quite a bit that addresses what the expectations are of downtown and how we're going to, you know, what, what was that, three years ago now? What the intent was. So, I'm not sure when you're asking EDAC to go back and look at the downtown, but I'm having a hard time seeing how that fits alongside with what we have in the general plan. And then we've also, around that, provided some supporting pieces such as the zoning ordinance that specifically addresses the area that downtown is in. And the other thing that I would like to see EDAC focus on where we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck, literally, and that's not from downtown. Most of our revenue is coming from the east side. And so, I think we need to be fairly strategic in how we ask them to go about refining this document. Having sat through the majority of the EDAC Commission meetings for the last year, I think they have a really good sense in what they put together, what we sat down and discussed as in our joint meeting. But I'd like to hear more about what you're trying to get at, because I think I'm not hearing the words right to be able to understand it. So, based on my comments, maybe you have a reaction that you want to help to, help me to understand a little bit better what you're thinking of.
Maybe, could I just add a thought on that? It sounds to me like your concern is you want to ensure that that vitality remains and that there isn't an encroachment on it and that we do what we can to maintain that and maybe enhance it.
Mm-hmm. And to Ms. Clapper's comment that, yeah, it's not the engine, the economic engine of our city, for sure, but, you know, sometimes it's your, you know, think about your own body, sometimes the smallest thing that makes the biggest difference, even though it's, you know, and that's the way I look at our downtown. It makes a huge difference in quality of life, and although it's not bringing in the dollars that the east side is, still, some of the, if you took away the downtown, one could argue that perhaps that economic engine we have on the east side would suffer and suffer greatly. So, I do think, to Mr. Collins' comment about ensuring it, but again, I would caution that we don't try to ensure something to so adamantly that we put ourselves into a freeze block. I don't want to see us put ourselves into a freeze block.
Mr. Albert? Mr. Ober.
I certainly don't, I don't mind the idea of trying to be careful about not destroying something or damaging something that we have that's very nice. But, you know, as I've said before, when we talked about these topics in other sessions, I personally would love to see those quality-of-life kind of issues, to have somebody look at, what are the rate-limiting steps that are keeping it from extending into other parts of, say, Laurel Street down the south end? I often tease Mr. Malpe, less so recently, because there have been less things that we've been doing up on the north end. It seems like every time we're talking about any kind of retail-type oriented thinking, it's always pressed the north end, the Laurel Street key. And Laurel Street's a big street. There's also some very large, very affluent communities in San Carlos that are on the south end of it, that might very much appreciate having something like that down there. So I'd like to take, preserve what we have, but I'd actually like to take a little bit bigger view of how can we grow what we have. And I think to Ms. Clapper's point, I think that's absolutely right, that in doing all of that, we have to make sure that we don't lose track of the really big engine of economic development, which is stuff that's going to happen in the commercial and industrial areas of the town, which will, to your point, Mr. Grokot, play off of. One of the things that I would imagine would be attractive to a new business looking to locate in San Carlos is the existence of the downtown. And are there things that we could be doing to knit the commercial and industrial areas closer to downtown? I don't know, shuttles or something to make it more convenient to get to and from. But I'd like to take a sort of bigger view of this, see how we can grow stuff, not just preserve stuff.
Well, if I could summarize, then it seems like it appears that everyone is fairly happy with what you've presented to us so far, but certainly on the Laurel Street side, I think that folks would like to get a little bit more breadth, so to speak, and again, Mr. Ober's points down to the south end or whatever, and perhaps EDAC could take a look at that and to Mr. Grokot's comments. It's always hard to try to balance off the what to do versus what we have in the general plan and not put a kibosh on some stuff. So I think you've got some things to work with there, and you could take that back to the EDAC Committee.
Be sure. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. As I stated, I've been visiting 20 businesses, 10 per week in the last couple of weeks. So it's been really successful, and I will continue that effort. And I've started in the heart of our city, which is our downtown. And as I stated, it is an enviable downtown. It is something that other cities really want to have.
If some of those businesses are restaurants, you're not eating at all of them, are you? Because that's going to be, you're going to be, it's going to be a long...
She's walking from one to the other.
She's walking. Okay.
She's walking from one to the other. Okay. If I'm just, I'm actually very glad to hear you say that you've been visiting all those businesses, because a conversation I had with Mr. Malpe earlier today, prepping for this meeting tonight, I'm just speaking for myself, I very much appreciate these reports. I would love to hear that the staff for San Carlos that's focusing on economic development is spending as little time as they can reporting to us and as much time out there actually doing economic development. So I'm glad to see your meeting with businesses.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Ober?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a five-minute break, please.
Good. Stretch my legs.
See somebody listening? So let's get back together here. Where did Mr. Grokot go? Oh, there he is. Okay. Just a second, Mr. Walter, we'll get Mr. Grokot on the dais. Thanks for taking the five minutes, folks. Okay, we'll go to item, new business, item 10A. A consideration of approving a resolution to set a public hearing on December 9, 2013, to consider 2014 rates for residential and commercial solid waste collection services pursuant to Proposition 218. Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director, here tonight. I'll take the lead on the presentation, but I just want the council to know that as we go through our presentation tonight, and then there would be follow-up questions and information that you would request, we have other city staff here, Rebecca Menon Hall, our Administrative Services Director, Kristin Elderson, who helped prepare the staff report. She's one of our, the Management Talent Exchange persons we have available to us tonight. Done a great job. We have recology staff, and we have Kevin McCarthy from SBWMA here as well. So I think we should be able to answer the questions that you may have. So I'll just go ahead and launch into the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
So tonight, we have a variety of topics that we want to talk to you about as it relates to the solid waste rate-setting process. So just a quick walkthrough of that. The recology, who's our trash collection contractor, and South Bay Recycling, who actually takes care and disposes of all of the trash and recyclables that are collected around the city, they submit rate applications to the SBWMA board. And that, those applications come in in June, they're reviewed by SBWMA staff, agency staff, comments are provided, and revisions are made. And then the SBWMA board reviews and approves those revenue requirements for those two entities at their September meeting. And essentially, from that point, the member agencies are left to then go forward, and based on Prop 218 process that's set out in state statute, they go ahead and establish rates for the upcoming year, which effectively are in place by around January 1st. Oops. So as we look forward into 2014, whoops, I apologize, as we look at the City of San Carlos revenue requirement, the information that's been provided and was approved by the board shows a 2014 revenue requirement of just a little over $8 million. Essentially, that is what recology and South Bay Recycling have as a need. They have to have that much money to provide the services that they provide in 2014. The collection revenue, if we look at the current 2013 rates for all cart categories, will realize an amount approximately over $8.2 million. So what this does is it looks, at this moment in time, and I consider this to be a snapshot, it looks like we would have, with current rates, a surplus of a little over $160,000 in the 2014 year. I have to remind council to understand this, this is an estimate, and as I'll talk in a moment, how the rates are determined and how we use a truing up over a year on either side of the current year to help us understand and get to actual costs. So this, at this point, is our best guess for 2014. As I mentioned just a moment ago, there's four components to this 2014 revenue requirement. We have what is estimated for the 2014 rate year, and that's the top, the top bar block there. The 2013 rate year, which is still an estimate, because we have not yet finished the 2013 year, and that number is shown there to the right. We have the 2012 rate year actual and the 2011 rate year actual, which now have been determined in our final. And as council can see, in the 2014 rate adjustment, there is a combination of both surplus, estimated surplus, as well as actual surplus and actual shortfall that has, helps make up the final number for 2014. It's complicated, but it is, it's something that is required by the contract with SBWMA and recology that calls for a truing up of these costs. So looking at rate 2014, rate year estimated surplus, these are the components that kind of helps result in this $160,000 surplus. We have recology services, compensation, and for 2014 actually represents a decrease in cost. We have a disposal and processing cost increase of a slight amount, and the city cost and franchise fees are up slightly. And again, this results in a estimated surplus for 2014. So the way that would look is, if the council took no action to raise rates, then we would have an estimated revenue that would meet costs. And so that is, that's a good sign, a good place to start from in the discussion of this. And a note to make that the recology compensation is a decrease, just to make that point. So that's a, that's another good sign as far as our contractor is concerned. One of the comments that came up from previous council session and also as part of our strategic plan was looking at the idea of a rate stabilization fund. When a surplus is estimated, it's possible that the city, if the surplus is high enough, the city may want to establish a rate stabilization fund in which the money is paid back to the city by recology so that the city can hold the money and earn the interest. And if that's, if we had a large surplus, or if we were projecting surpluses of high amounts for a number of years, we think it may be worth the effort to set up a rate stabilization fund. But at this time, when we look at the total surplus and the projections into the next couple of years, don't seem to indicate that we will have a significant surplus, and so staff is recommending at this time that we would not establish a rate stabilization fund, but we would work, continue to work with council and the rate adjustments that we may need that would avoid accumulating large surpluses in coming years. And we're going to ask for council's permission to go out and commission a study to help us understand the basis for our rates in the coming year. And one of those reasons is so that we can, we can be sure as we go forward that we're not setting up to accumulate a large surplus. So as far as the revenue collection that's necessary, it's divided into two categories, for commercial accounts and for residential accounts. Tonight's focus is on the residential account side. And the reason for that is we have, what I'll describe in a couple of minutes, is a cart alignment strategy, where we're looking to try to align the cost of picking up and disposing the residential refuse carts with the actual cost to do that. And again, as I mentioned before, what we would like to do on the commercial side is be able to take, have a consultant come onboard, help us understand better the commercial rates, all the different categories, and get a good, solid basis for that as we go forward. So we're really looking tonight and for this 2014 application to focus on the residential side. So I mentioned the word cart alignment, and one of the things to point out for council on this chart is, as you can see on the left side, you have the different cart sizes for the residential services. And then you have the current number of accounts in each one of those cart sizes. The two smallest sizes, 20 and 32 gallons, represent about 85% of all the, these residential carts in San, in San Carlos. And we show also the current rate that we, that is charged per month for those different cart sizes, and the actual contractor cost per month for those different carts. And then on the far right, council can see that there is a difference. The numbers in red indicate where we have an actual deficit in terms of the rate we charge versus the cost to the city for that picking up and disposing of those two small cart sizes. And we actually have a higher price for the two largest cart sizes than is necessary to fund the cost of actually picking those up. So staff has been looking at ways to get into alignment with the cost versus the rates, because one of the things that, in the spirit of Prop 218, we want to be sure that we are actually, that ratepayers are paying for the cost that's proportional to the service that's being provided. So this is a strategy that the city has been taking. One of the, one of the reasons for subsidizing, excuse me, one of the reasons for the lower cost of the smaller carts has been to emphasize and encourage folks to recycle more, and so there's been an incentive to have a smaller garbage can. So tonight, we're going to walk through three options for council to consider and have some discussion on. Option one is simply no rate increase. Across the board, we would, we would leave all rate categories unchanged for 2014. Essentially, that would result in the numbers that I showed before, where we would have an estimated surplus of about $160,000 for 2014. This doesn't get us any closer to cart alignment. So if council chose this option to go forward, we would be making no adjustments, and we wouldn't be adding a surcharge to the small carts or decreasing the cost of the larger carts. So this would be an opportunity for the council, if you felt like that going forward, we're fine where we are, then we could go, the council could choose to go with no rate increase. The second option is going down the path of the cart alignment. And what we do is, we look at the opportunity to make an adjustment on the small carts by increasing them slightly, $3 and $2 per month, and we look at the opportunity to do a cost decrease on the larger cart sizes. And what this does is it moves us a little closer to cart alignment. We don't get there in a single year. In fact, probably it's a number of years before we would get there based on the size of the surcharges that we would be looking at here. Essentially, we do this with a net change in the residential revenue that we receive being zero. There is, we don't increase or exacerbate the surplus, and at this point, with this, with this option, we still are recommending no increase on the commercial side in those commercial categories. This represents the highest cost option for council to consider, and so as the Prop 218 notice would go out, this is the way that it's currently written. And what that does, of course, for December is it gives council the maximum flexibility for adjusting rates based on what the highest cost option has been laid out. So option three, residential cart alignment. Again, we make a slower move towards cart alignment with a smaller surcharge on the small carts and a... alignment with a smaller surcharge on the small carts and a smaller decrease on the larger carts. This is again, an idea that we can move towards the cart alignment that we would like to get to eventually, but this is, this would take a number of years longer than the previous slide. And again, we have, this still results in the, about the same surplus at the, for the 2014 year as we'd indicated, appreciable increase there. And again, we would be looking at keeping the residential revenue requirement the same just by making these adjustments. One of the things council asked staff to look into from previous sessions was the idea of being able to provide some rate relief for our rate payers that were lower income or had some difficulty adjusting to the costs for trash service in San Carlos. One of the things we did find out was that the, there are programs that are offered by private utilities that are based on income and that folks have to actually apply in those utilities and become qualified. We did find within San Mateo County and the Recology territory that there are two cities that have taken the Lifeline program that's offered through PG&E, and they have, it's called the CARE program, and they have applied it to the recology service that they have, they offer in their own cities. The City of Pacifica offers a 15% discount on single cart 20 gallon service for those customers who qualify in the CARE program. In San Bruno, it's a 25% discount on a single cart 32 gallon size. And both of those are dependent upon the, that rate payer qualifying for that CARE program. It represents between 3% and 5% of the customers in those cities, so it's a relatively small amount. And looking at that for San Carlos, at this point in time, it's hard to know how many households would qualify. If council desired, we could go forward and establish such a program and then see how many people applied to be part of it, to be able to take advantage of it. We did just a simple estimate of a 20 gallon cart, 15% discount for 500 accounts would be about $19,000. So that's the impact to San Carlos. Now, one of the things that we have to, the council would need to consider if we went down this path was that that $19,000 has to come from somewhere. And so, as it would be very likely, that's not something we could pass on to other rate payers to subsidize. So we would need to have council's commitment that that $19,000 would come from the city's general fund, for example, or absent that, it would have to be a tax that would have to be passed by two-thirds of the residents in order for that special tax to be used for that subsidy purpose. But at this point in time, we've identified this simply as a program that's available in other cities served by Recology that can offer a discount, but we do know that that does have a fiscal impact to the city that's outside the trash rates that we charge. And one other thing on that, if we did go down that path, and we also are pursuing the cart alignment that I've been talking about, essentially, we would be increasing the price of the smallest carts where this discount is potentially being offered. So it's possibly a discount on a price that's going to be increased over the next several years in order to reach cart alignment. So, it's just one other complication of that program. It still would result in a lower cost for those rate payers, but it's possible that it could be increasing in the next several years as we move towards cart alignment with council's direction. One other aspect of the rates that we need to have council approve so that can be set is the unscheduled services, or what's called attachment queue. These rates cover special services such as backyard collection, or other events, or extra pickups, those kind of things. Recology can certainly outline many of the other ones for you if you desire. But essentially, these costs for service are passed directly on to the customer. It's not, it doesn't affect the other customers except the ones who want the extra service, the extra pickup or whatever happens to be, and that's put directly on their bill. The rate adjustment for these services are based on a, the franchise agreement language, which uses the U.S. Labor Consumer Price Index, All Urban Consumers Rate, which for 2014 has been determined to be an adjustment of 1.69%. So those backyard services, unscheduled services in attachment queue would be increased across the board by 1.69%. So our staff recommendation for you tonight is to consider the authorizing us to issue that notice of hearing pursuant to Prop 218. Schedule the public hearing for December 9th, 2013 to discuss and approve solid waste rates. And we're recommending that you, that you allow us to move forward with that notice using option two as the preferred option. And again, what that does is for council, it allows for the maximum flexibility. Should you choose to reduce from that amount at the public hearing in December, you're able to do that. If we go forward with something less, then the council would not have that flexibility at that time to move towards a rate, a higher rate than what you've advertised in your Prop 218 notice. So we're recommending, also as part of this, no increase in the commercial rates in any categories. And also, it's not noted on the slide, but it is the $10 per cart decrease for 64 gallon and 96 gallon residential carts. So the next steps in the process, obviously after tonight, receiving direction from you, answering questions you may have, the Prop 218 hearing notice will go out by October 25th, and that allows the 45 days before the December 9th public hearing. And then we would want to have the adopted rates effective January 1st, and the first trash bills go out at the end of January for the 2014 rates. So that concludes my presentation. And as I mentioned before, staff is here to address issues, questions, concerns you have about this. And so at this point, I'll turn it back for questions or otherwise.
Mr. Walter, thank you very much for your report. Questions, Mr. Walter?
In the options presented, the options two and three include a paragraph that says, "With this option, it is recommended that further research is conducted on the commercial rates", dot, dot, dot. But under option one, that's not included. Is it not possible to choose option one along with that paragraph?
Councilmember Grokaw, we do want to do that. So that's an oversight on our part for the staff report. But we would like to look at the commercial rates in 2014 so that by the time we're coming back to you with our, with the rate proposals for 2015, we've completed a study and we have a good sense of the basis and the current sense of our commercial categories.
Even if we were to choose option one, which is not to raise the rates at all?
That's correct.
Okay. And then if we're interested in this, I called it, in my notes, I called it a safe haven area for retirees who are on fixed income. You referred to it as the CARE program. If we wanted to go that route, we wouldn't have to make that decision tonight necessarily because that's not, all we're doing tonight is deciding to go forward with a rate increase notice if we're going to have a rate increase. And this idea of creating a CARE program or adopting that would happen at another meeting, or is that something you would like to hear us decide tonight?
If council has direction for us to pursue that, then what we would do is we would contact PG&E and we would look into...
Recology?
Excuse me. So, we'd contact PG&E regarding that CARE program.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Basis for that, so we had information about that.
Apologize, okay.
And then, and then we would work towards making that information available and then having folks who would care to apply, who would qualify, would apply. I think that's the point. We kind of don't know who will until they do. So if council desires, we'd go forward with that direction and we would pursue that program. I think what we would want to just be aware of is that it's possible that as we get, as we start figuring the 2014 rates, and as we get into the 2015 year, we'll start to know if there was an effect based on the number of these rate payers who qualified for that program and were able to receive a reduced rate. So it'll, it would phase itself in, but it will have an impact as we go forward.
And the $19,000 that you estimated was based on what percent of savings offered?
I think it was 15%.
15%?
500 applicants.
That's correct. It was 15% on the, on the small cart size.
Yeah.
For 500 rate payers.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question, which may be for Mr. Rubens. I want to make sure I understand the flexibility, or lack of flexibility that we may have under Prop 218 about setting differential rates on different cart sizes. Having read the staff report and whatnot, it seems to me that, if I'm understanding it correctly, we do have some flexibility where it doesn't necessarily have to be cost exactly matches the fees on a cart-by-cart basis. But I'm not exactly clear whether we have any flexibility, you know, how much flexibility we have to say as a matter of public policy, we would like to discourage people from generating large amounts of trash.
Well, I think the issue that I see in this, in the proportionality issue that comes from the language of Prop 218 is that, and there's no, there really isn't an exception in Prop 218 to talk about policy-driven considerations. So, the way we would establish that would be through a study that would establish fees and the information that we currently have may not include all of the factors that lead to fees. So for example, I could see a future fee study might try and weigh the cost of, long-term costs of a, filling up the landfill early. And that could be quantified in some way that would then justify charging less for a smaller cart size. That information is not available right now, and so the recommendation of staff is to narrow the differences in the rates and the way they're being calculated to, in an effort to make them more proportionate pending that evaluation. That's, I think, the basis of the recommendation. So, in short, we don't have the information, I think, right now that we could point to to say, "Aha, this saves money by doing this." But I think it's information we could develop and bring back to you at a future time.
Okay, good, thank you. That clarifies a lot. Mr. Walter, the next question I had was, the various options that staff is proposing, if I understand it correctly, they will all end up generating a small surplus, or they're forecast to generate a small surplus, is that correct, on the order of the $170,000?
Yes, essentially, that's the estimate we have at this time.
Is there, was there thought given to actually, separate from the cart migration cost differential being reduced? Was there thought given to actually reducing the rates so that basically there would be no forecast revenue surplus?
I think what we, what we considered along that line was that, because the numbers were dealing with our estimates at this point in time, and the $160,000 in the, in light of eight point, over $8 million revenue requirement is not a significant amount. And so rather than reducing rates in any way at this point in time, we felt like at the very minimum, holding rates steady would be a way to move forward. We get to another year, we determine whether there would be other cost increases that we'd have to worry about. Because if we, if we felt getting into a situation where we would have rates go up and then go down and then potentially have to go up again, may be counterproductive. So, we felt like the best, the best, the lowest option would have been to leave the rates flat.
Okay, so you were applying a smoothing concept, basically, in a sense?
Yes.
Yeah, in a sense. I do have a number of other questions, but let me just ask one more and pass the baton and we can come, we can come back if others don't ask the ones that I was going to ask. The surplus deficit calculation that you showed us tracing back a number of years, one thing that struck me as interesting is why are adjustments from 2011 flowing through the 2014 rate structure? That just seemed like one year back too far.
As I understand this, and perhaps Mr. McCarthy would be able to clarify further, but as I understand this, this came up kind of late in the process where it was identified that there was an actual amount that needed to be reconciled from 2011. And so the 2012, essentially, it was being added now as, including with 2012 actuals to true up those costs. So it was something that was discovered during the result, or the process of establishing the different actual final costs from those previous years.
Does that mean, like theoretically, we could be in 2017 and somebody might come back and say, "Aha, we just discovered something else in 2011? You owe us or we owe you a bunch of money?"
I won't say that I know for sure what our statute of limitations on those rates are. But as I understand it, the typical process is supposed to be, we're two years back, final numbers, and that's where we go.
And I take it from the fact that this was included in the rate application that it is, whatever the source of it is, it is consistent with the contract, so it's allowed under contract?
I will take it to be that's the case as well, yes.
Okay. I mean, one would hope that, that two years ought to be plenty of time to be able to ascertain what it actually costs to do something.
Okay. Ms. Flabber, questions?
Yes. Okay, so while we're looking at these different options, and there's this column that's called Actual Cart Cost. And let's say for the 20 gallon, it's $41.23. That's not really the actual cost of servicing one 20 gallon cart. That's the average account with the 20 gallon cart and however other mini carts they have. Is that, would that...
What that cost represents is the cost to service that cart in San Carlos. So it's not an average of all agencies?
So where is the, where is the cost for servicing the other carts? The blue carts for the recyclables and the green carts for the yard waste and the compost
That information is available in the, in the rate application information, and I'm, I'm having a difficult time recalling the numbers for those at this moment in time.
Okay, so, but I just, I was just curious if it was included in this?
Those costs, those costs have been determined, but essentially, the rates are based on the cost to service the trash can.
Okay, so this is just to service the trash can? Okay, all right. Because I'm going, I spent some time going, going back through the information that we from our meeting back in June where we were doing a study session and looking at the various protests that we received last year on the solid waste rates. And there were a lot of comments from folks about the different types of cans, and could there be something different in the scheduling? If I'm only putting my trash out every two weeks, or I'm only putting the compost out every two weeks, why can't that be reflected in my rate? But it looks as if we're not to that point yet to be able to set rates based on the choice of the schedule of the account holder?
Based on our conversations with Recology about the way the operations work in the field, what we would need to do, we would really need to have an opportunity to study whether there would actually be any savings. And the main reason is because a truck that would service the trash can, the recycle can, the compost can, as it would go down the block, it would, they have the technology to be able to say, "You only pick up at a certain address on a certain week," or something like that. But the truck's still going down that route essentially every week because there would be a number, there would, there would probably be a small number of folks that would have some sort of a variation in their, in their pickup schedule. So I think it would be very complex. It would have to be studied to be able to find out whether there's an appreciable difference or decrease in cost in that regard because Recology still services the routes for all three types of pickup every week.
Okay, good, thank you. Those are my questions at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Just indulge me for a little bit.
Actually, it was Mr. Grisilli, not Mr. Olbert, but that's okay.
Can I say Mr. Walter?
I thought you said Mr. Olbert, I'm sorry.
I thought you said Mr. Walter.
Sorry, my dad.
He can answer your question if you want him to.
I should direct him to you.
Can't see him, he can't hear.
You mentioned that there's, you didn't feel that there was enough surplus at this time to establish this rate stabilization fund. With $160,000, shouldn't we start somewhere? I mean, what constitutes a baseline or a beginning amount?
Well, that's a good question. But again, I kind of... But again, I kind of go back to the idea that this is really just an estimated surplus. And the, the revenue requirement is based on a snapshot in time. That is, the, the current number of accounts in the various categories that we have in San Carlos for 2014 is a snapshot at that moment. Those numbers change. The accounts change, the types of accounts change, the, the, the basic bins or carts or whatever also change. So, the number's not a firm fixed $160,000 that we know we're going to have. So, we felt like unless there was something much more significant and, and I, I would want to say that probably it would have to be at least a half a million dollars before we would want to go down that path. But I also feel like what we want to try to do is we want to try to make this so that it's not a ongoing surplus that we continue to accumulate. I think we want to make sure we're setting rates that are, you know, reflective of the costs so that we would be pretty darned close as we go rate year to rate year without some other significant issue that comes up that causes us to raise rates. So, that, that would be my sense of it. And so, I don't think we had anything that said absolutely after this amount, we should consider that. But I think we felt like, based on the fact that this is an estimated number, we're not even sure if it's going to materialize, that we did not want to go through the process to set that fund up and work with Recology to have that money paid back to us.
So, one of the reasons that you're not necessarily, or you're not recommending option one is that by not changing rates, that $160,000 estimated surplus may be half or may evaporate or, or be larger?
Or it might be slightly larger.
Yeah.
Again, we won't know, as, as we looked at the, kind of the, the three-year period, we won't know until 2016 rates what the actual for 2014 was. So, we'd look at that, back at that time and we'd, we'd understand, well, how close were we to the $160,000 estimate? We don't really know. We might have an idea later in 2015 when we set those rates, later in 2014, but at this point, again, it's an estimate.
All right. So, it's kind of a guessing game.
Mr. Collins, may I just interject something?
Best guess.
I think in effect, if one were to adopt a proposal which, other than for the cart size thing, didn't change rates, and if everything worked out the way your forecast is, you effectively have established $170,000 rate stabilization fund because you'll have a surplus that you can apply to the next round of rate changes. Because that, that money's going to go someplace.
That's correct.
You just wouldn't have, you wouldn't have done it in a formal sense.
That's correct.
Right. You have a net effect of that.
That's right.
Okay. How much did we raise rates by last time? Do you remember?
6% in most categories, I think.
But it was more than that.
More than that, it was 12%.
Yeah.
Well, but what I'm saying is it varied by cart size, but it was still a 15% increase.
And, and that was a year ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, that was effective 2013, yes.
All right. And then, let's assume that this $160,000 surplus is inaccurate figure. I, I didn't see what a surplus might, what your estimate of a surplus that might be created would be if we did options two or three. Obviously, it's more, I would assume, but.
Actually, it's not. What, what we did was we, we adjusted the residential cart rates to keep, I had a slide on here that was, this slide. So, that 3.5 million, that's the residential revenue, or residential account revenue. We've essentially tried to adjust those cart rates so that we can keep that number as close to that number as possible.
All right, so it's just revenue neutral or thereabout?
Yes, so, so, so we're still looking at approximately the $160,000 surplus for, for that, for alternative two and alternative three as well. We've tried to keep that neutral in residential category.
All right. And I had another question, but it sounds to me like maybe you answered it earlier. And that was like, why couldn't rate relief for those people that qualify for it come out of the surplus? And I guess what you're saying is that you can't give them, you can't get relief out of a surplus when you don't know exactly what the surplus is going to be because it's not a real dollar amount? Is that what, in essence, what you're saying?
In, in part, it is. But the main point is that that's money that's realized from other rate pairs. And so, we would, we would have a difficult time using that money to, to lower the rates for certain individuals. So, that's why the number, the $19,000, as we've used that amount, would need to come from a, a city's general fund essentially to pay that subsidy.
Put it another way, it sounds like it would be a fairly bright-line transgression on 218 to do something like that.
We believe that's the case.
Right.
All right. That's enough for me for now.
Okay. I've got a list, but I'll do three and then we'll go back. Why didn't we look at increasing commercial rates?
Well, the, one of the reasons is because right now you have essentially two brand-new people to the, the trash rate franchise within the city. We had our former assistant city manager who had this for a number of years. And so, as we began to come up to speed on this, that was, that was something which a lot of information was not readily available to us. And so, we felt like getting our feet on the ground with the, the residential categories and the fact that we had a year where we looked pretty close as far as revenue versus costs, we felt like, let's take the opportunity, we can study commercial in the upcoming year and really get a good handle on it.
Okay. Comment on that later. So, what you're saying is if we did option one, we, again, estimated, we'd estimate raising $160,000 or surplus? If we did option, if we didn't do anything, didn't raise any rates at all?
If, if the council did nothing at all, didn't raise rates in any category, we still would have that estimated surplus.
So, looking back, it says we have 286, possibly 286,000 altogether revenue requirement, or rate adjustment, rather, to the positive side. So, in other words, whether we raise rates, take option one, two, or three, that, that's the first line. The other items are, again, they're estimates, I realize, but assuming they were correct, we'd end up with 100, those three total 126, is that correct?
You're, you're looking at the, I'm assuming that.
Looking at page three, top, top one. The first one is 160. You said that's going to stay the same no matter what option we use?
Yes.
So, if you add it together, the three below it, you'd have 126? Because the total's 286, so I took 160 from 286?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's sort of out there, 126 that we may, again, be in a positive mode for.
That's correct. Based on, based on the, the combination of the actual numbers that have been determined and the estimates that are still there.
If we wanted to, we could not raise the rates on the 20 and 32, I mean, we could have a hybrid option here, maybe, I'm just asking. We could not raise the rates on the 20 and 32 can. Okay? And then, cut the rates on the 60 and 94 can, perhaps using 5 and 10 dollars. And if we did that, just back of the envelope, it looks like we'd spend about, if we did it five on the 64 gallon and 10 on the 96 gallon, we'd spend about 89,000 or use about 89,000 of that 126. Is that, is my logic moving along in the right way or wrong?
Your logic of using some of that surplus is correct. I, I won't vouch for the number while I say it.
I understand, and I realize these are estimates.
Yes.
But in theory, if they were close, you'd theoretically still have $37,000 sitting out there.
A hybrid option could be that we do not increase the rates on the small carts, but do decrease the rates on the large carts.
And last question this time. Who would manage the, the program if we wanted to, you know, help the lower-income folks? And would we manage it or Recology manage it? Who would manage that?
I think I'll ask that question of Mario if you know who manages that in those other cities.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Mario Puccinelli, General Manager of Recology, San Mateo County. In our San Bruno and Recology of the Coast contracts, Recology does manage the, the, those PG&E care folks. So, we would do the managing of that.
Would there be an additional cost to the, in the contract or is it just?
It's, 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 it would be similar to the application we use for our backyard-exempt customers. Simply, they would provide us the proper documentation, we would record it and then initiate the change.
Okay, not a huge increase in cost if, in case there was passed along? Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Mr. Puccinelli, very much. I, I've got a few other questions, but we got other people, go ahead. Mr. Grokot?
Two questions. I didn't see in here, the, there was a surprise overpayment that we were notified of. It, $750,000. And I didn't see any accounting of that in the staff report, so what happened there?
I think what I'll do is I'll ask Mario to come back up and he has a pretty succinct explanation for that and how that factors into the, the rates we have.
Okay. And then, Mr. Mayor, I have one other question.
Chair, chair, we have some others, yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr. Councilmember Grokot. I do have that answer and, and really, that answer is, ends with the surplus that we're looking at right now. I would like to take this opportunity to, to kind of clear the air over the, the overpayment issue that has been described by, previously and reported previously. Recology increased the rates exactly as they were prescribed in that 2012 rate ordinance enacted by the council at that time. What did take place was that Recology continued to carve out the, a portion of the revenue received towards the allied balancing account that we were collecting on behalf of the City of San Carlos. Once the revenue reconciliation was completed in March of 2012 for rate year 2013, for, in March of, excuse me, completed in March, in, for 2012, for, in March of 2013, it was discovered that the allied balancing account was still being funded. Once we were instructed by the City of San Carlos to cease funding that account, we did so and transferred approximately $514,000 into the proper account. And by doing so, San Carlos residents now are seeing that rate surplus that Mr. Walter has, has described. So, to recap, if we hadn't carved out any of the portion of the allied balancing account, we would be in the exact same position as we are today.
I just find it interesting that it's, I appreciate the explanation. It's not in my staff report. I, I have no way to, you know, if anybody asked me about it, I've got nothing before me, nothing written down where I can go, "Yeah." You know, somebody calls me on the phone, "Matt, why are you guys raising rates, blah, blah, blah?" I have nothing that I can answer anybody with, and that's really unfortunate. It's very uncomfortable. But I appreciate your explanation.
Thank you.
Another question or?
Yeah. So, my other question was the, and, and, by the way, that last comment, I don't, I don't know who that goes to, but it's just, I'm, I'm being honest.
They didn't prepare the staff report.
Yeah, I know they didn't.
They didn't.
But I'm just being honest up here that, you know, it's an uncomfortable position as an elected official not to be able to tell somebody what happened to 750,000 that now just tonight turned into 514,000. So, I don't know. I still, I guess I don't really have my question answered in the way I would like. But I appreciate your getting up and speaking to it. The, I want to focus just a second on the 19,000 then. If, if we were to do that program and then, so essentially, it means we're 19,000 short. But we talked about this fund, I suppose that would be a source of revenue, would it not?
As I, as I mentioned before, the, the situation we need to avoid is using rate pair, essentially rate pair funds to subsidize other rate pairs. So, we would have to find a separate source of funding for that $19,000 that we would use to offset the cost because Recology still has the same cost to pick up the can.
Yeah, okay, so I, I get that. I, I understand your answer, that's a very good answer. However, would it be possible to put it in the 218 documentation that this is what we're doing so that we're just upfront and honest and very transparent? We're setting our rates, probably our rates, if, if estimates work out accordingly, we may have a bit of a surplus. We want to have the surplus so we can smooth out our, our rate increases in the future. And we're going to use part of our surplus in this community to subsidize seniors who apply through the PG&E, you know, confirmation program, if you will. I, I don't know, to me, if I got something like that, I, I would say, "Okay, I understand that and I'm all for it because, you know, my grandmother lives here." Not that my grandmother lives here, but, you know, I mean, I could say to myself, "Yeah, my grandmother lives here, she's on a fixed income and I appreciate being able to, through this program, to help her out or somebody else's grandmother or whatever." As long as we're being transparent about it, can't we do it?
I think I'll, I'll ask that question of our city attorney.
You've got to ask, yeah.
Well, this is a, one of those questions I think can't be solved by the, the study of proportionality. It's, it really, it cannot.
Cannot, any other word, cannot.
It cannot because the, the issue really is, you would be not studying the rates or the cost of providing service to those residents who'd be getting the discount. It would just, it's just a straight discount. And it's perfectly appropriate to have a program. It's just would not, in my opinion, be appropriate to you, to have other rate payers pay for a program that would provide discounts to other rate payers through the rates. Within, within the 218 process or you would have to do it outside of that and, and have a program like the other two cities, Pacifica and San Bruno do that it's not funded by the rates, it's funded by the general fund or grants or some other source.
Okay. Fair enough.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you. The, a couple of things. One is, I'd like to revisit the $750,000. I know from when we were talking before, you said that Ms. Mendenhall had a chart to look at because whether we do it here tonight, and I agree with Mr. Grokot, it's always helpful to have something in writing or do it afterwards. I would like to see some kind of funds analysis that says, "Here's how we explain this all." So, can we see the chart?
And I'll ask Ms. Mendenhall to come up and address that issue with the council.
So, this is a, a chart of how the 2012 rate surplus came to be. And this was actually provided to us by Recology and we've talked with it, or talked about it with them at length. The total billed revenues, the money we receive from the rate payers totaled $8 million. We charged the, in 2012, we had a 5.3% rate increase. It generated $8 million. The $2 million was spent on disposal and processing fees. And this is, this next line here is where you get into what Mario was talking about with the miss, or the, how they were classifying the payment. And he could probably come up and describe this a little better than I can. But you can see there was a $750,000 allied payment here in the 1.5 that would not be included here. So, had they not continued paying for the allied payment for the balancing account, it would have been .8 in franchise fees. Their compensation was the same. But because they made that payment to us, we had a little shortfall until we paid that back. But the end result was we had a $200,000 surplus in 2012. So, either way, had, had they not made this payment, the total would have been the same, the end result.
Oh, I see. So, so it was a, that's why you used the term, a, actually, you didn't use this exact term, but a miscoding, if you will. So, the bottom line still ends up being the same. It's just that in one case, something got put in the wrong account, which happened to be an account which involved transferring money to the city, so we had to send it back. So, it, it looks like there was a, a transfer. Okay.
Okay, he follows it a lot better than I do. The seven, the repayment by the city to whom?
To Recology. So, they sent us money that we then had to pay back.
They sent us three-quarters of a million dollars that they're saying we shouldn't have had.
Okay, and we sent it back to them?
And we sent it back to them.
So, if I can kind of try to summarize this in, in layman's terms, really what happened was there was a prepayment. And so, money got moved that was balanced by a rate increase that otherwise wouldn't have happened last year, right? So, those two things offset. Because they gave us the money back, they didn't have it, so we had to raise our rates, correct, the $700,000. So, we raised our rates too much last year than we would have if they kept the money. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah. And that's part of the reason we have the surplus.
Why we have a big surplus at this time? Right, because they gave us the money back last year, we had, that wasn't calculated as part of the money that Recology had. So, when they did the rates, they didn't figure that 700,000 because they gave it to us, we had it. So, they do their calculations for setting their rates, their X, that's what we need to set the rates at. to set the rates at, didn't, didn't factor in. Now we've moved the money back, so Recology's got it, so it's been factored into the rates now. So what was an issue last year has been fully accounted for this year. So in other words, what happened was you essentially made a prepayment. So last year, you raised your rates higher than you had to raise them and as a result, this year, you don't have to raise your rates as much as you would have otherwise had to raise them because you prepaid.
Put it another way, we accidentally created a rate destabilization fund. So, so we accentuated the movement in rates where there would have been a middle course to get through them.
Right. But at this point, all, all that money is being accounted towards what the cost of providing the service is. It's all baked in there, it's all accounted for and it's all been factored into how we need, what, what level we need to set our rates. And as a result, this year, you don't have to raise rates. Had you not had that $750,000 blip, you would have to raise rates at least a little bit this year.
And.
Mr. Grokot, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I get it.
You get it, okay. Mr. Ober, sorry.
And I, based on what I heard Mr. Puccinelli say earlier, it sounds like we have definitively identified that the thing that was confused there was the continuing to fund the allied waste balancing account. So going forward, we don't anticipate this kind of thing happening again because that, that's done, right? Okay. Next question I had, thank you. Next question I had, by the way, Mr. Walter, I would love to get a copy of that chart and I suspect that probably others up on the dais would as well.
You'll provide that.
Thank you. Next question I had is, I asked you earlier, the last round about could we, or did we can, did staff consider lowering rates basically to wipe out the anticipated or projected $160,000 surplus? The question that, that Mr. Grisilli had asked reminds me, the actual total surplus is about $290,000 when you add up the surpluses and deficits of all the years that are currently active.
If we look at the three-year span that the 2014 rates now get into, then, then that estimated surplus, still it's an estimate because only part of those numbers are actually.
$290. So, but, okay, you anticipated what I was going to say next. So if everything worked out the way we think it will, we actually will end up with a surplus of $290,000. Is that correct?
That's correct. Based on the snapshot in time that we have right now, yes.
Okay. So what, do you have a sense of, I think you had said earlier that if, if the surplus had gotten up to the point of about half a million dollars, you'd be saying, "Time to think about doing something." This sounds like we're about 60% of the way there actually, right? So it's a, do you have any sense of what it, what it would do to rates if we said, "Let's lower the rates so as to wipe out that anticipated surplus?"
No, we didn't run a number to, we didn't run an option that would have determined to make this, this surplus zero.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Another round, because I got some more, so. Ms. Clapper, anymore?
Not at this point.
Okay. Just calling some. Okay. I think I have one or two more. Attachment Q, do we have any flexibility to raise that more than 1.69%?
As I understand it, it's set by contract, that it's supposed to be adjusted by that, that rate.
Cannot raise it anymore.
I believe that's the case.
Okay, so Mr. Puccinelli, I hear him whispering.
Kevin, would you care to address that one or Mario, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. More money.
The, the 1.69% is what Recology can receive as prescribed in our franchise agreement. The city can elect to set costs above that, but our piece is the 1.69.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. So then, Mr. Walter, why wouldn't we want to raise that a little more? It seems such a nominal amount. Raise it 5%. Raise it 4%. Raise it 6%. Seems like you generate some more money.
Well, remember, these costs are paid directly by those subscribers only.
I understand.
So there isn't a, that, that's not a cost that's part of the rate base except for that particular person. So if nobody wanted backyard service, then there would be no, there would be no cost for backyard service.
I appreciate that, but if they did, they'd have to pay for it.
That's correct, they would.
So if it costs, I'm going to say $50. I don't know what it costs for backyard service, okay? So this year, we'd raise that rate 1.69% to $51 or whatever the heck 1% is. Why not raise it 5%? And, and they'd get, they're 1.69 and we'd get the rest.
Mr. Mayor, it's, we still are governed by Prop. 218 even on.
Just asking, I'm just asking a question. Go ahead.
So it's still the proportionate cost of providing the service would apply to, to this because it's baked into the rates and, and what you're trying to do is capture the cost of providing those extra services through the rate structure.
Service, okay. Well, but we're already indirectly on these other rates, already over or under.
That, that's correct and, and the recommendation is to try and narrow that a little bit.
Narrow down, okay. Let me, let me ask one more question on that and, and then, so let's assume, right now we've got, we're, the cost is actually more than what we're collecting on the 20 and the 32 gallons. So the problems it looks like we have are on the 64 and the 96s. Is that correct?
Actually, it's the other way around.
Depends on what.
That's, yeah, that's what I wanted, I, I'm trying to identify the problem because it seems to me that nobody's going to complain if the, if it costs a lot of money and, but we're only collecting less, that's our problem, not the rate payer's problem.
Well, I think, you know, you.
I'm just asking what, what, what the issue is.
Absolutely, and you have to look at it from a total revenue obligation perspective. This is, you know, this is what we have to pay under the franchise for providing these services. Whether or not we're not charging the right cans, certainly the council can make a determination at some point if they want to put general fund money towards garbage contracts to subsidize what people pay, that's a policy decision of the council. But in terms of charging those services and spreading out, out amongst the rate payers and making that subsidy, I think what we recognize is there needs to be some proportionality applied and that over the years, our rates have grown further apart. And, and at some point, and we, I think, recognized this point last year, need to start to collapse some of the categories back together.
So, so let's just assume for a moment that 64 and 96, last question this time, this round, 64 and 96 were, the differences were zero. Let's just assume that.
Yes.
Okay.
The difference between the actual cost.
The 1596 is a zero, the 4352 is a zero. Let's just assume that for a moment, okay? But the other two are in the red there. Do we have a problem?
Well, they wouldn't be.
Okay, good. So the trick is, it might, that's, I mean.
It'd all be zero.
I don't mean, I don't mean to jump on it, but if we keep lowering the two, bottom two and just leave the top ones the same, we're good.
That assumes that you're going to have a surplus to be able to lower it.
I understand, I understand.
But yes, you are correct, your logic is not wrong.
Assuming if we have a surplus. If we didn't have a surplus, I realize my logic goes out the door.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Sure.
To confuse the logic just a little bit.
Of course.
Sorry.
Sorry.
But we have to remember the number of carts in each category. That is, we have 85% of our carts in the two smallest categories.
I get it.
So the two larger categories, we don't realize very much as far as the, so there needs to be an adjustment, the smaller adjustment for a larger number of carts versus a large adjustment for that, for these final carts. Excuse me, a small adjustment for a large number of carts versus a large adjustment for a small number.
Not if you have a surplus like we do now.
It, it's a, it's not, it's not exactly the same because the cart categories, there's the numbers vary.
I understand, but I just, I already ran the numbers on the bottom two. I didn't run any numbers on the top. But I'm just saying, at this point in time, we don't raise any rates at all. We have 160, approximately, maybe, estimated, $160,000.
Yes.
Okay? Plus 126 others. We've got $286,000. So you could lower the, well, again, I'll get to that, but that's my motion's going to be anyway, but to lower those and leave the other ones the same. But anyway, other questions?
We could certainly calculate whatever hybrid option you wanted us to try.
I understand. Well, I think I did some of the math for you, maybe, maybe not. Go ahead, Mr. Grokot, any more questions?
The only question I have, and I always bring this up, is the street sweeping. How does that figure into what we're doing? When, when do we identify the street sweeping costs to the rate payers?
Street sweeping costs is included in the, the amount that's shown for the franchise agreements for the city. There's a small amount in there that we, that's what, that's where the category is for that. I'm trying to find where, I don't know if I have a slide that actually showed, there it is, city cost franchise fees increase. It's, it is in that particular line item.
So it's somehow figured into all these rates?
That's correct. Yeah.
All right, well, I, I always feel obligated to say it because actually, the things the city attorney was just saying about you can't, you can't subsidize one for the other and you can't charge, you know, when I was asking about the $19,000, well, we can't do that because we can't take money from rate payers and subsidize other rate payers. And that's exactly what we're doing with street sweeping because there are people who don't get street sweeping whatsoever because they don't have a curb and gutter in front of their property. And then on the other hand, the city's getting street sweeping at, at Burton Park, at Wheeler Plaza, et cetera, for free. And who's paying for it? Well, the rate payers are paying for it. And to me, I'll say that over and over again until I'm not on the council anymore unless we change the policy because I don't think it's right that we charge people for a service they don't receive. We're charging a fee for a service they don't receive. If you want to charge a tax, a, a general obligation tax for something, that's fine. But you don't charge fees for things that people don't receive service on.
Okay. Do you have any more questions?
Yes, actually I did. I'd actually like to hear any comments that the city manager or the city attorney in particular would like to make at, after hearing Mr. Grokot's analysis.
Oh, gee whiz.
I'll just make this quick. You know, the, the response to that is that the streets belong to everybody in the community. They're not all the, you know, the city streets, they're the community streets and whether the street in front of your house gets swept or not, the streets are being swept in San Carlos and litter that's in your community is being picked up, so.
Okay. I did have, let me just, why don't you ask somebody else and, and I think I may have one more of it.
Okay. Mr. Walter, if I could just, one more time on that $286,000 schedule. If we, if we lowered the rates on the 64 and the 96 by $5 and by $10, my calculations would lower, it'd be cost us $89,000 and change, something like that, ballpark. Would that 160 still, in other words, would we only lower the 286 by 89 or would the 126, I guess I confused, is that 160 going to stay there? Assuming it's right, and now it's an estimate. Is that going to stay there if we don't raise the rates on, on the, the smaller carts?
The 160 will stay there. If we don't, if we take no action on any rates, the 160 stays there.
So in other words, if we cut the rates on the last two, let's say, whatever we cut them, that will come off the 286, not the 126.
It would be, it would change our estimate for 2014.
It would come off the 286 as opposed to the 126.
First one's 26.
The net, I'm trying to go with the three.
Either place because the 286 has the 160 figure in it.
That's right.
But I think what we would end up doing is we'd show a slightly different number than the 160 for the 2014 year going forward.
But, but the, the two, it would come off the bottom, the 286 would, would be lowered by whatever amount we lowered it.
Yes.
So we may have more money than I thought we had. Okay, all right. Well, that's the only questions I have. Other issues, comments and things like that, but.
I do have one other question. Mr. Walter, could you put back up our favorite slide of the evening, which is the one that shows the cost versus the revenues for the different cart sizes?
Oh, for the different cart sizes?
Yes.
That one?
There we go.
Okay.
Thank you. The, the question I wanted to ask is sparked by Mr. Grisilli's comment about the hypothetical of setting the last two things to zero and just leaving the, the subsidies in place as they are for the smaller cans. I've heard staff use the term proportionality, proportionality test frequently and I guess the question I have is, if we were to do that, effectively what we'd be saying is, "Okay, if you have one of the two larger can sizes, we charge you 100% of the cost of the service" in Mr., in the mayor's hypothetical. But if you have the smaller cans, we charge you 60% or 70%. Does that difference in and of itself, even though nothing is charging more than the cost, violate the proportionality test?
Well, I guess the, the answer I think is that it, it could because you still have a differential between the two different cart sizes. But I think what the hypothetical was talking about is using this accumulated surplus to deal with the, the issue for this one year if, in that hypothetical of, of having actual cost for the, for the two largest and then continue the subsidy for the smaller ones. You'd still have an issue there, but you're, you're not as, the, the difference isn't as great, I guess is what I would say.
So, so the risk is clearly higher if your proportionality test has failed where you're charging people more.
Yeah.
Whereas if every, if nobody's being charged more than cost, but some are getting a better deal, that's, blows it, but not, the risk isn't as high.
One issue that, and I agree with that assessment, that would make sense to me, but it would seem inherent that that would generate a deficit in terms of the overall revenue that was being generated in a very significant way.
Over the long haul, other than, other than perhaps this one year because of things that happened in the past.
Right.
Yes, over the long haul, it's not sustainable to have some at zero and some subsidized.
Right. But, and I, and I would like to add that I think the, the efforts we make towards getting the carts aligned, you know, we, we had the two options, one of which makes greater strides in the first year than the other one does and one takes a longer period of time to get there. But I think if we, if we make movement in that direction, I think that's kind of what we're in, what we're hoping and intending to do.
Just calling, you had one more question?
Uh, no.
Okay.
We're going to save it.
All right, well, we've had a lot of questions. Certainly, if you can ask them along the way, I'd entertain a motion or I'd make, I'd like to make a motion, but whoever, and I rarely do that, but.
I'll make it for you.
Well, you may not, I may have to adjust yours, though.
No, I don't think you will. So I'm going to make the motion that we do sort of a hybrid of what staff is asking for and that is that we lower the large cart rates as we're in option two, I believe it was, and leave the lower two gallon sizes, the 20 and the 32 alone for this year. And we direct staff to, as they're recommending, further research, the commercial rate structure during the 2014 rate year. And furthermore, that we direct staff to look into the, what I called, well, I guess the CARE program. I'll just call it the CARE program.
Okay, I second that motion. So.
Other question about that? Does staff have enough information or are you able to tell what that does to our surplus?
I can tell you.
We want to hear what they have to say.
What, maybe I should, maybe I should try to restate it because basically, my understanding was we were going to take the surplus and we're going to apply all of it towards this up to what's described in option two for those two can sizes, which is what, a 10 and is that the 10 and, 10 and 10 dollar reduction?
$10 and $10.
So we'll have to, I think we'll have to analyze that. We have, we definitely have not looked at this approach.
Well, it, to me, it's just some simple math. You cut, I mean, maybe I'm wrong here. There's, there's, it's $5 a month times 1148. How hard is this?
$10.
I'm going, Mr. Grokot went five and 10, I believe. Option two, five and 10.
Option two.
Option two was 10 and 10.
Yeah.
I'm looking at option two. It says, am I reading it wrong here? It says five.
Two was 10 and 10.
Isn't it? Or my, my.
Option three says five.
Option two says.
No, no, no.
10 and 10, right?
10 and 10.
Okay. You, you want 10 and 10 or five and 10 then?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I was, I should have said it, the other option, five and 10.
Right. That's what I thought. Lowered five and 10.
Another way, you know, another way for the council to consider this is to just, if you want us to apply the entire surplus towards reducing the rates on the 96 and 64 gallon can size to zero, we could do that.
I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that.
Okay. So, you want to leave some surplus, five and 10?
Yeah.
Because we're not sure that surplus is real.
Really, anyway.
So, I think it's probably around $70,000?
No, I worked, again, I worked it out to be $89,000. Five, $68,000 for the $5 can, $10 for the, or rather, the 64 gallon can, and $20,000 and change for the $96 can.
That would make sense.
Does staff concur with that?
It's simple math, it's simple algebra.
Well, with all due respect...
I know. Well, I mean, Rebecca's there, she could certainly do that.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I have had personal experience in situations like this, where mistakes get made, because we're doing things on the fly. Okay?
No problem. Rebecca can do it.
We'll have to analyze that and get you exactly...
If I may, I think we agree with the logic. I think we agree with the back-of-the-envelope analysis. But you're not setting the rates tonight, anyway. And you're giving us some indication on how you might actually set rates in December. Really, the 218 notice could go out and just say, you're not going to increase rates at all, and be that simple, and still allow you to consider this option. You're giving us all the direction we need right now to be able to, you know, bring it to you to the penny of what it is you'd actually be adopting. And I think, you know, we can get that information out to the public as well, but, you know, it's your call, I think.
And I just wanted to explain why, and Ms. Grokot may have other reasons, but we started with cart migration. That was a couple of words I never really understood to begin with. And, you know, people are moving down, and because we're moving down, now we're not getting enough revenue. Now, we have cart rate alignment, where we're basically, if it wasn't this council, the council before, wanted to give incentives to folks to use smaller cans. And of course, that was the cart migration. So, now, we're saying, well, folks, because you're doing such a good job of that, we're going to charge you more. And that, to me, is a problem. I mean, it's, the water folks have done it to us. We have a drought, everybody conserves, and then, all of a sudden, the rates go up. And, because they aren't getting enough revenue. And so, this is, that's the basic reason why I'm seconding Mr. Grokot's motion, or would have made it. Those are the reasons why. I just, I just can't see the, to me, well, like I said, those are the reasons why.
Well, for what, I'd just like to make just a brief comment about that. I know about that concern that gets raised with, with water and whatnot. This situation, I think, actually is a little bit different. The reason I asked the question of council early on, I actually don't necessarily have a problem with providing an incentive on a policy basis for people to generate less landfill trash. Okay? The thing that I'm hearing is that there is a risk that we are in violation of Prop. 218. And, in fact, even if we did what staff recommended, we'd still be in violation of Prop. 218. But we could at least, you know, if somebody were to challenge us, we could throw ourselves in the mercy of saying, yes, but we're moving in the right direction. Okay? And your, the proposal currently before the dais clearly moves us partway in that direction. It does not do anything on the small can size. But, you know, is it defensible if we were challenged? I don't know.
That's why I asked the question, whether people are going to complain if their rates don't go up, and we're charging them less. You know, I can't see who's running through the door screaming on that one. But, you know, maybe there are people who do that. Would anyone else have any comments on the motion before we call for a vote?
My only comment is that we have a very rare opportunity to, you know, keep the rates the same for now. And that may not come around again. I mean, how often do we not raise rates? Seems like every time we come up here, we raise rates. It's not fun. And besides, we're not even doing it tonight, right?
Nope.
We're just giving direction.
Direction.
So, we may as well find out.
I think the only thing we would need to remember is, there is, and this happens whenever you have hidden subsidies, like we do here. If events go against us next year, we may very well sit there and go, gee, it's too bad, you know, now we have to, now we have to close the gap even bigger, even faster. It's too bad we didn't take another bite of the apple. So, you can buy comfort today at the risk of kicking the can down the road, which, if I remember correctly, was sort of part of the argument that we had last year at this time.
Oh, it was defeated last year.
Right.
So, Ms. Clapper, any comment?
No, I share a little bit, Councilmember Olbert, concern about, you know, if things don't come as projected, would it have been wiser to have gone for a simple $2 or $3 increase on the smaller cans at this point in time? Certainly, it was more significant last year, because we did a percentage increase plus a dollar surcharge on the 20 gallon and 32 gallon. So, everything that we're looking at this year, even if we go with the maximum proposal, pales in comparison to what we had to do last year. So, I am willing to go along with the, with the majority of folks, in hopes that next year, I'm not slapping my forehead going, ah, why didn't I?
And the only thing I want to mention...
More advice on that one.
I'm sorry. The only thing I want to mention is, as Mr. Malpe said, we're just indicating, so, in case, if this, if this motion passes, we will not be able to raise the rates at our December 9 meeting.
That's correct.
So, I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
And I would suggest, I would suggest the council might consider amending the motion to the rate notice going out with no increase for the categories. And then, you could have a separate motion directing staff to prepare an option based on your potential reduction of the 96 and 64 gallons. Because if we send the notice out based on that, then you're going to be locked into the lower rate tonight. You wouldn't be able to even raise them back to the level they're at now.
Fair enough.
And so, that, you know, there just doesn't seem to be a reason to make that leap tonight, though we hear what the council's saying, assuming that, you know, how this vote goes. But I would break it into two votes.
So, Mr. Rubens, Robert's rules. Can we amend that motion, or should we have a second, a second or third motion, so to speak?
The motion either can be withdrawn or amended, depending on your preference as the chair.
Okay. For the time being, I'll withdraw. We'll take action on the other item, and then we'll come back to it, and I'll restate it. So...
On what item? We don't have a motion. We don't have any motion on the floor, then? There's only one motion right now.
Yeah, I know. So, if I withdraw it, then we can have a motion to just simply not raise the rates at all.
That's the motion you make?
Okay. Well, I have to withdraw my other motion first.
Just to be clear, remember, we're just sending out the notice. We're not setting the rates, but we're, so then, what you're deciding tonight is, what do you want to put in the notice? Do you want to put in, as the city manager suggests, no change to the rates at all, which will give you flexibility to set the rates lower at the actual public hearing?
So, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to withdraw my earlier motion, for the time being. And I'll make the motion that we send out the notice, Prop. 218 notice, showing no rate increase for any of the sizes.
So, I withdraw my second, and second the motion that he just made.
We, one more, yeah, we just, we just remembered something. There is that one matter of the increase for the extra services that's recommended. I wanted to make sure you've covered that issue.
Fine.
He's got it in his, he just said fine.
As you stated.
I'll second the 1.69 to be added to that. Yes. Okay. So, the motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
And then, I'd like to make a motion that we at least direct staff to look at lowering the upper two cans according to option three. The, lowering the rates on the upper two cans, option three, so that we can take action on that at another meeting, present us the data on it. And I think that gets us where we want to be, right? Yeah. And leaving the other can sizes, obviously, alone, per what we just did.
Second. Discussion on that motion. Hearing done. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Malpe, Mr. Rubens. All right, moving on. 10A is done for tonight.
10B.
10B, consideration of adjusting, adopting a resolution approving the revised City of San Carlos Code of Conduct and Ethics Policy for City Council Members and Appointed Officials.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Jenny Liu again, Senior Management Analyst. In front of you is a proposed revised Code of Conduct and Ethics Policy for City Council Members and Appointed Officials. The Code of Conduct and Ethics Policy was created and adopted by City Council in 2004. It was revised in 2005. It has been eight years since it was last revised, so it's time for us to review and revise the policy again. The Code of Conduct and Ethics Subcommittee was created to review and revise the Code of Conduct and Ethics. Staff, including city manager, city attorney, and the senior management analysts, reviewed and revised the document. Commissioners also had an opportunity to review and provide feedback to the document. The revised policy will have six major additions. First, there will be additional language on prohibiting harassment behavior and making reference to the anti-harassment policy. We're adding language on limiting the acceptance of gifts and referencing guidance on the issue to the California Fair Political Practices Commission's regulation. And there's additional language on making personal comments on official and official settings. We're also proposing addition, adding language on the use of electronic devices, adding language on how the city responds to proclamation requests. And finally, there's additional language on how the city presents a position on legislative support letters. These are all the changes. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny.
Questions for Jenny? No questions?
No questions.
No questions? Ms. Clapper and I tried to work on, each looked at this and reviewed it, and you had more changes than I did. But, and then staff prepared it. Okay?
I actually have some things I wanted to ask, whether the council would be willing to take a somewhat different approach on a couple of these things.
Okay.
Is that okay to bring up now?
I think so, yeah. As opposed to, we can fix it before we make the motion.
Um, the, let me deal with the smaller, the issues first. In the, in the instances of sending out letters of support or opposition for legislation and of the proclamations, proclamation requests, the question I just had is, did the Subcommittee consider appointing actually a standing Subcommittee, which would be of the mayor and somebody else on the council and the city manager to do that? To do either of those two things?
The one I looked at is, it's the mayor and the city manager right now are the two that would decide it, but we didn't add a third person to it.
Right. My question is, did that come up in discussion?
Didn't, we never really had a formal meeting. It was just independent that we looked, at least I know.
Oh, I see.
We had a formal meeting.
Right. We, we just, we had one meeting, but we had shared our own set of comments.
I see. Right. I'm suggesting that, just from the point of view, that, that it provides, you know, additional set of eyes and perspectives, some continuity, if such is necessary. And it's sort of consistent with the approach of, it's the council making these things, you know, doing these things. And if we can't get the entire council together, which we can't from a logistical point of view, then that's what Subcommittees are for.
Can I jump in there?
Sure.
On that one? Because that's pretty much, I had only one other item that I was wanting to throw out for discussion. And this was the other one. And I just put in my notes, you know, vice mayor or a second council member. Because it seems like, you know, what you want is nimbleness, and as this is saying, things happen fast sometimes, and you want to be able to respond to it. And, you know, sometimes Sacramento's doing something, again, to hurt the cities, and we want to have our, you know, say on it, or whatever. But, so I was just thinking, you know, I agree with you, another set of eyes can be helpful. And I was thinking, you know, it would be a proper role for the vice mayor. So, the mayor and the vice mayor.
I apologize. He's talking about proclamations. You're talking about letters, aren't you?
Letters of support for legislation.
I had the same comment about both.
I apologize. I'm sorry. But you, but he's saying three people. Are you saying either or?
No, I'm saying, I guess you're correct. He may have been talking about proclamations as well. I was just focusing on 11C, which is letters of support for legislation. And on that, I was just adding, you know, it says currently, the mayor and the city manager need to be in agreement. And I was just throwing in the vice mayor as well.
So, you have, so you want...
So, there's three.
Three people. Okay. I understand. I have no problem with that.
If I can just add to the discussion, because there is a, there is an important distinction here that the council should be aware of before they consider taking action. And that's that you would need to form a standing committee here, and a standing committee would require Brown Act notification.
With two council members, that's an ad hoc.
No. It's, an ad hoc is a temporary committee. So, if you set up an ad hoc committee on a project temporarily, or, you know, we had an ad hoc committee to work on this initiative, now the initiative's over, so the committee doesn't exist anymore. These would be ongoing permanent committees until the next, you know, they can always be, new people can be assigned, but...
In that case, I withdraw my suggestion. No, no, because I, I mean, you may disagree with it. I mean, that violates the nimbleness of the proclamation.
Yeah. That's right.
We're not going to be nimble, so...
It would be, yeah.
That one, yeah.
The other, the other area that I wanted to tee up, something a little bit different, is there's language that's been added in here that, that basically talks about how council members interact with staff members. And, you know, I'm simplifying things a lot here, but it's, you know, don't attack staff members in public. The, I don't have a problem with that. But one of the things that I felt when I've, as I've watched this council operate, I actually would like to see a rule that we put on ourselves, which says, you know, don't attack staff members in public. But, but the preferred way of doing this, the way that we, as a council office, done, is if we have a problem with a staff member, we go to the city manager, saying, I have a problem with following things, following issues, here are the facts, with person X. If, if we are not satisfied with the response of the city manager, or if the person that we are concerned about is the city manager, him or herself, then I think what the rules call for is we convene a closed session discussion to say, there's a problem with the city manager, either specifically, or because when I raised this issue of a problem with another employee, he just blew me off.
Hey, can you reference the part that you're talking about?
Um, if staff can help me out with the exact reference, because I was...
I think this is section number nine you're looking at, where it says city council members and appointed officials relation with city staff, or is there another one?
I think that's it. But where is the exact?
While we're looking...
Page 11 of 16.
While we're looking, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock, please.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I apologize. I actually saw this, this afternoon, when I was reviewing it again, and now I don't see the changed language.
And again, I'm not going against that. I think it's a great idea, but don't we already have, do we have to codify?
Aye.
Do we have to codify that? I don't know.
Do we? Yeah. I mean, this is really all within the purview and discretion of the city council. You don't have to codify anything.
Okay.
You know, this was an issue that was raised by a number of council members over the last couple of years. So, we put it on the list for the Subcommittee and the council to talk about.
Mr. Malpe, can you, Jenny?
Do we know where it is?
Section number nine.
Yeah, I'll look through that.
Oh, and you're, oh, that's where you said you're not finding what you...
Yeah.
I thought it was 8A.
8A. Oh, you found some...
I thought.
Huh?
All right.
Oh, kind of.
That's the one that's, that has blue language in it, that looks like it's been added.
Oh, at the, at the end of 8A?
There we go.
Is that what you're referring to?
Well, that one's, that one's actually us not making, not dissing each other in public.
Or staff.
Shall we take that out?
That didn't get any jokes. I thought it was pretty funny.
Give that all the time.
God, this is, let me check my email.
Under section nine, II? Routine questions of city staff should be directed to the city...
Jenny, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Routine questions of city staff should be directed to the city manager, city attorney, or the manager's designated...
Actually, my email to Mr. Malpe, raising the question, said 8A. So, you know, Mr. Collins, I think actually it's that new language you were talking about.
And 9A?
Yeah, or 8A, at the end of 8A, where it was added. In any event, so, that's the language I was reacting to. I'm, I'm just, I don't have a problem with it. I just was wondering whether our practice ought to be, as I described.
That if that happens, then what, you're saying what someone should do if it happens?
Rather than, rather than challenge a staff person in public, in an open meeting, that our responsibility is to go to the city manager about it. Okay?
Okay.
And you're all shaking your heads like, well, that's what we're supposed to do anyway.
Quite honestly, that's the way I thought we were supposed to do it, so...
Yeah. Because this whole paragraph here is just about city officials and other city officials. And so, I'm not sure if you're distinguishing...
No, I think it's purposely broad, because we're all city officials.
Well, yeah, and the intent is also for this to, to apply to all of the... Well, yeah, and the intent is also for this to apply to all of the commissioners and people on standing committees, so it's, it's not just for council members.
As it should be.
Right. Right. In any event, so that's my suggestion about something that I wouldn't mind seeing in the code of conduct.
I think you're looking at item nine, sub seven, or eight? Is it eight? Nine, eight. Number nine, Roman numeral eight.
Oh, I see. Actually, I didn't notice that. I missed it when I was reading. That's already in there, basically.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we don't need to add anything. Apologies.
That's all right. It's all good stuff. Other questions or add-ons or subtracts?
I had something, and now I'm trying to think what it was.
We can always, you know, add it later if we have to. It's not like this is the last chance.
Yeah. I should have written it down.
That's all right. Come up with it, you know, if you're hurt again, then...
It's something that I came up with, you know, earlier when we were looking at things, and now I can't think of what it was.
Do you want a motion?
Oh, I know what it was. I'm sorry. And maybe we don't even want to do this as a code of conduct, but for a little background, you know, when I first came on the council in 2001, we used to, you know, I, it was, you know, Bob and Mark and Karen and Matt and Jeff, and it was, you know, we're a small town, it's comfortable, everybody uses their first name, but there was some things going on. In fact, that's why we wrote this document back then a little later on. And so one of the things that I implemented and asked the first time I was the mayor is I said, you know, from now on, what I would like to see us do is refer to each other as, you know, Mr. Grocott, Mr. Collins, you know, Mr. Malpe, or Mr. City Manager, Mr. Public Works Director, or whatever, and be a little bit more formal about it, because when you're doing that, when you're addressing somebody that way, it becomes a little bit more difficult to make a personal comment or a derogatory comment towards somebody and start throwing barbs across the dais. And everybody followed, and to this day, we still do that. I don't know if we need to put it in writing, but maybe we want to think about it. I don't know.
Go ahead, Mr. Albert.
Personally, as I know I shared with, I think Karen was on the council at the time, pardon me, council member, clapper, was on the council at the time. I brought up at one of our strategic retreats, I actually personally wish we didn't do that, because I think it makes us look stuffy and overly formal. You know, I understand the point, Mr. Grocott, but that's just my reaction. Same thing, just a different reaction to it. You know, I'm not going to hold my breath and turn blue and die if we decide to put it in the code of conduct, but personally, I'd prefer not to have it in there, because I'd actually like to try and lobby you guys to eventually stop doing that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, can we leave it up to the discretion of the current mayor?
Sure. Well, quite honestly...
That sounds like how it started anyway.
Yeah, maybe, but believe me, I think we shouldn't put it in, but I think the main reason we did it, and of course, you have your opinion about what stuffiness, and I have it if somebody gets a little excited, it becomes way more personal if I go, "I don't agree with you, Ron."
Inflection.
It's the inflection, and that's quite honestly what we've always avoided up here, and we've had some fierce debates sometimes, but we've always been polite and we've used protocol. And I think that's honestly where I come down on it. That's what I worry about. Maybe I worry about myself, maybe we're about some other council member, or future council member.
I think I could probably get the inflection of Mayor Grisilli.
But I think it personalizes it. It personalizes it, and I think we're basically, you know, impersonal up here to some extent, and that's the way I think it should be. But anyway, I wouldn't necessarily put it in the code.
Okay. Very good. Fine.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm ready.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve a resolution number 2013-109, resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, adopting revised city of San Carlos code of conduct and ethics policy for council members and appointed officials.
I'll second, and then I have an item of brief discussion on it.
Go ahead, Mr. Grocott.
Just to point out to folks, you'll notice that some of the, there's some things that are struck out about the mayor establishing a series of achievable community goals and so forth, and I saw that being struck out, and I was happy to see it struck out, because while things used to be that way in the past, I'm glad to see us get away from that kind of policy, and I think what's replaced it really is our strategic planning process. And we're supposed to act as a five-member body, and the strategic planning process helps us do that, so...
Any other comments? Hearing none? I'm sorry, Mr. Albert, go ahead.
Well, it also helps protect us against those occasionally tyrannical mayors.
Tyrannical mayors?
Not you.
Not me, of course. No, no, that's okay. If someone wants to call me tyrannical, I don't mind. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, 10C, consideration of adopting a resolution to adopt the city of San Carlos strategic plan. Thanks, Jenny. Mr. Walter, you're back.
Again. Good evening, Bob, Mark. I'm sorry, I apologize.
You holding up okay, Jay?
Has your vacation started yet, Jay?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director, and given the lateness of the evening, I'll quickly go through this, but as you're aware, we want the public to be aware, we continue that strategic planning process, where we involve council members, staff, in the important decisions for our communities and the things that we are working on in each six-month increment. So back on September 17th, we did meet again for the 16th time, and that's quite a record. I hope that stays going. But the purpose was to review the city's mission statement, vision statement, core values, update our three-year strategic goals, and set new objectives for the six-month period of time. The vision statement was left unchanged, and again, what we expect San Carlos to be by 2017. The mission statement, again, unchanged, and these are things which had been worked on for a number of meetings to develop them to where they are, and the group felt that they should just stay the same. The core values, again, these things which the city of San Carlos values, and all of those, of course, contribute to this great place where we live. The three-year goals remain the same from the previous six-month period, and again, in that order, attract and develop a quality team, provide effective and sustainable public safety, enhance and sustain facilities and infrastructure, enhance economic development, plan for and implement financial sustainability. What we did was we created a series of six-month strategic objectives, which we had planned to show a dozen more slides and go through each one of those individually, but I won't do that. I will say, however, that they are on the city's website for anyone who wants to take a look at them, and they involve quite ambitious scheduling of activities and initiatives over the next six months. The important thing, too, is we went back and we went through the strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats matrix for the city, and as we were sitting around in the group, we came up with 59 separate accomplishments that we had had to make note of in the last six months, which again, is a very important achievement, and I know there was several times during the meeting where we all thought we had the 60th one, but again, it's always good to be trying to achieve even a little bit further. So with that, unless the council has questions, I'll let you get to your next items, and again, remind folks that our strategic plan and the new objectives are on the city's website for anyone to go take a look at.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Questions, Mr. Walter? Seeing none, enter into motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move adoption of resolution number 2013-...
110.
110, resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, adopting city of San Carlos strategic plan.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
All right, moving on. 10D, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing additional appropriations in the amount of $250,000 for professional and technical services related to the PG&E line 147 safety evaluation. Mr. Malpe?
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, Jeff Malpe, city manager. The resolution before you this evening would appropriate $250,000 and essentially create a project code to address a number of issues related to the PG&E pipeline 147. One of the powers that I had as your chief executive officer during a declared emergency is the ability to spend money quickly outside of our normal purchasing, hiring practices, and that's a very important thing when you're dealing with an emergency situation. Last Friday, when we, was it Friday, when we ended the emergency? We gave up that power, and what we don't, what I don't want to see happen is us in a position where we're having to spend weeks hiring these technical assistance folks to work with us on the investigation while the investigation passes us by. So I'd like to get that, the money appropriated and put into this project. At this point, it's going to come out of the unappropriated fund balance, which I believe the staff report calls out, at about $3 million. I don't think we'll be spending a quarter of a million dollars on this issue over the next month to six weeks, but if we need to, and it's in the public's safety's best interest, I think it would be prudent to have these funds available. We will be making requests, in fact, we've already made a request even before this issue rose to this level. We had made a request to PG&E to pay for these costs. We'll seek reimbursement for these costs. I think it's entirely appropriate that these costs be paid for by the utility. This is a direct result of information we've received from the utility and information we have not been able to receive from PG&E. That said, there's a couple of different issues going on here. We have the immediate investigation that we're trying to address. We also have the issue of becoming an interested party in the San Bruno hearings. That could be a very long-term thing. That could be, that could require a greater financial commitment, depending on to what extent the city council in the future wants to participate and at what level. There's no guarantee that we'll get a reimbursement from PG&E of any of these expenditures, but it's my estimation at least that the quarter of a million dollars will get us everything that we need within the timeframe of participating and being an active participant in the CPUC investigation, so that we can hire all the technical assistants we'd like. This will be an ongoing item, I imagine, for some time in the city now, and I expect this issue will be discussed as part of next year's budget proposals and other financial reporting that comes to you. This will not be the last time we're having this conversation about spending general fund money in San Carlos to make sure that our PG&E transmission lines in town are safe.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malpe. Questions? Mr. Grocott?
Just one question I have is, you mentioned timeframe. Do we have an idea of timeframe for this process?
On the CPUC process?
Yeah, and what we're planning to do here, and, you know, I could see us, let me put it this way, you know, the reason I'm asking the question is because you've said we're probably not going to, and hopefully not, spend $250,000, but just doing back of the napkins, you know, I was thinking, this looks like a lot of money when you break it down, because even for some high-level consultants at $200 an hour, you're talking about half a year possibly at 40 hours a week.
Right. Just to give you some indication, in the last seven days, the city staff, and I'm just going to estimate based on a few of us whose hours I know pretty well, have spent nearly 500 hours working on this issue in one week. We obviously, at the staff level, can't sustain that effort on this very important issue and get all the other important business items of the city done, so we need to, we need to start to have, you know, experts, who quite frankly, will likely have a higher hourly rate than we will, begin to pick up some of that slack, so that we can move this forward. It's very important, it's still going to require a lot of our time, but we need to bring in some folks to help with that. Again, you know, I would hope that we're not going to be spending all that money in just a six-week period, but then I would also say, I hope that the investigation lasts longer than six weeks. There's no way to know right now. What we know right now is that PG&E would like to conclude the investigation and get line 147 reopened as soon as can be reasonably done. We know that the CPUC wants to move their investigation as quickly as is reasonable, but not rush it, and we definitely agree with that perspective. We don't want the investigation rushed. We need time to hire some folks. We need data requests. We need, we need that level of support, so.
Okay.
It's a shot in the dark right now, that number.
Just through, Councilmember Grocott and the mayor, just some basic timeline here, the CPUC process that exists now is contemplating hearings through about December 6th, so I would anticipate that we are at least going to be participating through that timeframe, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done between now and that time, gathering information, reviewing documents, filing the necessary papers, and asking the right questions.
Other questions? If not, Mr. Galvin would like to speak.
Mike Galvin, city treasurer. I have some concerns about the $250,000 is, I want to be sure we don't get into a sinkhole here. The CPUC does have a proceeding, there's a pre-hearing conference that's set for October 21st in San Francisco. At that point in time, the commission will be gathering issues, schedules, and figuring out what type of hearings will take place. I would like to see instead of just a blanket $250,000 authorization, that at some point in time after this pre-hearing conference, when it's better known what's going to take place, to try to segregate that $250,000 into different areas, and also that there are several interveners involved in that proceeding, and I hate to see duplication, duplication, et cetera, of effort. There are several interveners, such as Turn toward utility rate normalization and other government agencies involved. I mean, and I hate to see us spending money on something that's, that may be duplication of some other aspects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin. I think what, Mr. Malpe, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think basically what we're looking at here is some real technical, I certainly agree that Turn and some other folks, we could get some information from them, but I think that the amount of monies that specifically that Mr. Malpe is looking for is the real technical folks who do pipeline work that we don't have, as well as council who does pipeline work that we don't have.
That's correct, and, you know, as we've discussed earlier, there's two separate issues happening with the CPUC. There's the ongoing hearings related to what happened in San Bruno that we have petitioned to become an interested party in. That could be a very long range. We're not committed to spending money as part of that process. That'll be multiple decisions for this council and future councils on how much they want to spend on that particular issue as it moves forward. It's been going on for a number of years, it'll likely be going on for a number more years. What my particular focus is on is the current staff investigation that the safety and enforcement division of the CPUC has begun. That's, we know, going to be compressed to a relatively short timeframe. That's not going to go on for years and years. Some of those issues may be some of the same issues that are covered in the hearings, but to the extent that the CPUC elects to include those issues in their investigation, we want to make sure we have every available resource to take advantage of the time that the CPUC is giving us in looking into and investigating these issues. So we can certainly report out, as the city treasurer said, in terms of how the money is spent, you know, at each meeting, if you'd like, we can keep this item on the agenda so we can do kind of a running report, but I would expect to use this money to do professional services agreements and not to exceed amounts, and if we start to exceed those amounts, or we think we're going to need to exceed those amounts, we'd be back in front of the city council.
This is, I think...
This is, I think that the caution notes that are being sounded are certainly reasonable. On the other hand, this is literally an extraordinary circumstance, which is why we declared a state of emergency a week or so ago. And in addition, we are playing catch-up on an investigation or hearings in part that are already underway. That's expensive to catch up. And frankly, I guess my biggest concern is, with all due respect to the other parties involved, including the PUC, I want people who represent the interests of the citizens of San Carlos. And, you know, nobody else is going to do that except our staff and the people we hire who work for us.
If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move we approve resolution number 2013-.
111.
111. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving additional appropriation in the amount of $250,000 for professional and technical services related to the PG&E line 147 safety evaluation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gropka?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So now, let's go back to 7J. Mr. Gropka, I believe, or I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Did you pull that off?
That was Mr. Gropka. That was me.
Just for the audience, it's an adopted resolution to amend the professional services agreement with Neil Martin and Associates for contract staffing services for the Planning, Economic, and Housing Divisions of the Community Development Department in an amount not to exceed $73,440.
So on this item, I have a number of questions. That's why I pulled it. And the first one is related to the item, but it's not directly related to our action. But I just am not understanding why, when we had a contract we knew was going to end June 13, we're only just now in the process, or we just finished the process of starting an RFP and getting in the competitive bid process. I don't understand why we ended up behind the eight ball, as it were, and then we're having to, oh, go ahead. Thank you.
Before we, Mr. Zavie, you speak. I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:15.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I guess to answer that point, perhaps we could have gotten to this contract RFP earlier. The Community Development Department has been extremely busy for the last six months to a year. For instance, we have 67 active projects going through community development right now that have been ongoing, and that's just day-to-day operations. That doesn't count some of the larger projects that we've been working on. So I think, you know, day-to-day operations and processing these things that we have going took precedence over letting the RFP earlier, and so I guess that's my response to that.
So we, because we ended up in that position, we did an addendum to the contract for $75,000.
Yes.
How many positions did we expect that to pay for and for what duration?
That was to be a bridge, and I mean, if you look at it in context with what is being asked of the council this evening, I would say that was a, you know, a three-month period, let's say, something like that, I mean, to get us out to where we are today. We haven't reached, you know, we haven't spent all of that $75,000, but we're getting close to it. It covered a principal planner, a senior planner, an administrative assistant, and some, most recently, some associate planner work as we've had someone go out on an extended illness leave, so to cover that. So that's what it covered, and it was meant to cover several months of work.
So everything that's on the chart at the bottom of page two, all those positions is what it covered?
Yes.
Although not in the same balance as what this shows, so like, for instance, 40 hours, 20 hours, et cetera?
Yes. Normally, the principal planner, historically, he has been covered at about 20 hours a week. But in this proposal, we're pushing that to 40. And the reason for that is, as you know, and is noted here, our economic development and housing manager recently left for another city. So I need some assistance in that regard to bridge that gap until we hire another economic development manager position. In addition, there are some very challenging and complex projects that are coming now and are in the very near future, and we're going to have to move very, very quickly and expend a lot of staff time in a short amount of time. So I don't want to miss that.
So if I understand correctly, then under the $75,000 extension, we were paying for about 20 hours a week for a principal planner. Now with Mr. Zawiki gone, we're having to bump that up to 40 hours.
Right. And as you noted earlier, or as I noted, that 20 hours took us, you know, or that last contract took longer to expend that $75,000 that the city manager executed back in June. So you can see that, you know, we're anticipating that we may spend more money in a shorter period of time because of these additional hours at that principal planner level.
So we do, it sounds like we do have somewhat of an overlap. The current contract covers some of these things. You're asking for an allowance for more to take us, now, this next, the 73,4, how long do you expect that to last for? Because if I'm reading this right, if I may, we're going through this qualification process. When do we expect an answer on the qualification process?
I'd say it's going to take us a couple of months. The RFP closes at the end of the month. We'll need some time to go through all the proposals, do the interviews, and then get through the selection process. So it's going to, you know, take a couple of months to get through that process.
So we're mid-October now. We're two weeks October, four weeks November, and a couple of weeks in December?
Yeah, I believe so.
Are we getting to eight weeks?
Yeah, about eight weeks from now. But I think it's also important to note here that while we're asking for $75,000, or $73,000, that we'll only spend what we have to spend. And we're not going to spend the whole thing.
I understand. Yeah. Okay. All right.
So are there a motion on item J?
I move that we approve resolution number 2013-.
104.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving an amendment to the agreement for staffing with Neil Martin and Associates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gropka?
Cautiously, yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is 7M. I'm sorry, was it Mr. Olbert who brought this up?
It was M for Mark.
That's right, M for Mark. How could I forget that?
Well, because I go by Congress, I mean, Councilmember Olbert.
Yes. Got that. Questions for Ms. Boland?
The reason I asked this item to be pulled from the agenda, consent agenda, is, Ms. Boland, is I just wanted to get some sense about what drove the cost overrun. In one sense, I stipulate that $34,000 is a relatively small amount of money, and that's only half of the overrun because our partner is coming up with the other half. But as I no doubt have been annoying staff over the years, I'd really like on these kind of projects for us to come in at budget or even below, particularly when we're so close.
Absolutely. Councilmember Olbert, and that was our goal from the start, Christine Boland, Parks and Recreation Director. There was a couple areas right off the bat where we got into trouble, but tried to recover. But it was mainly what hit us in the construction budget area was that the library, the county library uses a very specific shelving vendor for their slat wall and different types of shelving in the library. So as we were getting that bid, we actually got to receive the credit on the main contract from the contractor, but the bid for the shelving was well over the credit that we received. So right off the bat, we were hitting our contingency. And two other areas that were unanticipated were the fire department requirements for additional beacons, as well as the cabling of technology, IT cabling to bring that section of the library into the 21st century. So with those items out of scope and kind of beyond our control, we cut into not only our contingency, but a little bit over budget. So with the partner, as you said, we've gone 50/50 on the overages.
Thank you, and I appreciate the explanation, and I just want to make clear that I'm very glad the library was remodeled. I think that was a good use of funds. I will be voting against this just mostly to try and make the point to folks that we really do need to stick within the budget.
Is there a motion to?
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Regarding this project for the library, this is one of the few projects that we have had during this, for at least a year, where we did not get back bids from the contractors where we had to look for additional funds for this project. This was actually a project where we had all of the funds from all different sources, none coming from the general fund, that actually the bids came in below that budget, and now we're finding out that there's some additional expense. So I think on the whole, in comparison to many other projects where we have had to go into the six figures to look for additional funds, that this actually was a pretty darn good example of working with the funds available. And I think if we needed to, we could reach out and ask for donations from the community. The friends in the library would be positioned to help with some additional costs, which was part of the original discussion on this project. But I think at this point in time, we want to get it done so we can have that opening on November 2nd.
I have no doubt that we can find the funds. You know, my point just is that I'd also like us, over time, to develop the discipline to bring things in. It's hard. I've done it. It's hard to do.
I agree with you, Vice Mayor Olbert. I think having a partner stretch that a little bit if it was under our 100% control. But we did have a wonderful partner in this endeavor, so we're proud of, and we're going to be.
And we were working with a budget that was two years old by the time we got to this project, so.
We weren't delaying.
And we probably could have increased it and come back to the council at that point in time, but bids looked good.
Every project I've ever worked on that went over budget, there's always lots of reasons for it.
Okay.
There is. I'd like to.
Move on. Thank you.
Can I please acknowledge our.
Any other comments? None? How about a roll call on this one? Go back and forth.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Have a motion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve resolution number 2013-.
107.
107. Appropriate $34,000 from the Library Tenant Improvement Fund to the San Carlos Library Interior Renovations Project, C9787.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gropka?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Regrettably, no.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to acknowledge our city engineer who was key on the project, and Matt Lee is our city engineer.
Thank you, Matt.
That's it.
Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying late.
Yeah, thanks for staying late.
Thanks for staying late.
Any other items? I don't think so. I think we've covered all the items on the agenda. So, meeting.